Fourth 2024 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the pledge led by Ms. Pike.
Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to remind everybody that Monday, April 8th, will be a half day for students due to the partial solar eclipse. I know my own kids are excited about that, so just a little reminder that we do have that short day. And also, Board members, Celeste will be absent tonight. She had a school event, so we wish her well in her game tonight, and we're excited to hear how that goes. Do we have any requested changes to the agenda? If not, motion by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Christie, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And I do believe we're going to start off with a special recognition. Dr. Wilson?
Yes, thank you. I'm actually going to kick that to Jim Allen, the principal from Ellen and STEM Academy, to do an introduction and share a little bit about what we're recognizing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith, and thank you, the board. I want to recognize one of our students tonight, and it was a really great honor to be able to be asked to do this. The student that we're recognizing took part in the Congressional App Challenge, which is an official initiative by the U.S. House of Representatives, where members of Congress host contests in their districts for middle and high school students, encouraging them to learn to code and inspiring them to pursue careers in computer science. This initiative supports and emphasizes those critical, important pieces that we emphasize as a school and STEM and in our rapidly evolving world. This year's contest had 11,334 students from across the U.S., marking an impressive increase of almost 1,000 more participants than the previous year. And so, some really exciting things. There were 3,645 original applications submitted, so not groups, individual projects put together, indicating a remarkable growth in that talent in our whole country and many more in our community. So, each participating member of Congress selected a winning app for their district. Each winning team was invited to showcase their winning app to Congress during the annual House of Code Festival, which is a program that is a private and public partnership, a really neat thing happening in DC. When Ellen and STEM Academy student Dominic Palaia, who's over here, was selected by Congressman Burchett as Tennessee's 2023 Congressional App Challenge winner, he had submitted an app called ReMemory. Dominic's words were that he was motivated to create the app by his grandfather, who suffered from dementia, and also his grandmother, who takes care of him. The app stores, or sorry, the app supports iPad, iPhone, and on the Mac, and is meant to help those with Alzheimer's or dementia, along with their caregivers, to combat memory loss and cognitive impairment. The app provides activities for the brain, medication tracking, progress reports, resources, among many other things. And I can't describe to you just how impressive it is to see Dominic having done this, let alone in the ninth grade. Our students are impressive, and Dominic stands out amongst that even, and that was a really incredible thing. So, it's my honor to join the board, Superintendent Rieswick, and everybody else here, in recognizing Dominic for not only winning the app challenge, but for creating something that was going to help our community and the world.
Wow. (applause). Mr. Allen? What's the name of the app again?
Re, it's ReMemory.
Madam Chair, upon a personal privilege, please.
Yes, sir.
I want to say, and the young man is leaving now, but I want to say that, thank you. When I was 18 years old, my grandmother died from complications of dementia in 1978, and I was her caregiver during the summer, as much as I could be. That was my senior year going off to college. And then in 2020, after about 12 years, my mother passed away, complications of dementia. So, I know the need that is for those who suffer with this disease, and then also those caregivers who do so. Thank you so much, at this early age, caring for people enough to put that on her.
And thank you Reverend Butler for sharing those words about your family. Appreciate that. Next on our agenda, we will have a presentation. I'll refer to Dr. Rieswick on the Library Collection Management Presentation. Appreciate you putting this together, and I know your staff's worked really hard on it.
Thank you very much, and thanks for asking for this. I just, I know Ms. Sarah Searls is going to come up and speak to that, so if she's coming up, I just want to take a minute and just to echo what you're saying. Really, the work of our librarians and the importance of our librarians in our schools, just the purpose that they play and just the exposure they give to our students to open their minds to lots of different things, we really, really are thankful for them. And above them, we really are thankful for Sarah. You know, those of you who've got to know her, just her ability to navigate, which I'll say is very tough places sometimes, and there's lots of feelings about things like library books and all that kind of stuff. She does a great job of keeping our kids at the center and at heart, and keeping a great balance of what keeps our kids safe, as well as what gets them exposed to different ideas. So, we're just very appreciative of you, and thank you for talking about how we do library collections today.
And I do want to say, I know we have several speakers on this topic, so I think we'll have them after, Sarah, after you do your presentation, we'll have them speak, because I know there's several students, and just to be respectful for their time, in case they want to head out after that, if that's okay with everybody, the board. All right. Hi, Sarah.
Hi. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Rieswick, members of the board. And thank you. I just want to start by particularly thanking you for the opportunity to speak today, because this has been a national conversation. And locally, it's been marked by really a commitment from, I think, the people in this room to lean in on our relationships and to making sure that we're always learning about the process and really considering it carefully, and finding the best solution for our kids, which is a testament to the strength of our district's leadership. And so, I'm deeply appreciative of the opportunity to be here. I'm proud to work for the Knox County Schools and grateful to be able to share in this conversation tonight. So, libraries, I think part of the mystery is that they have long operated as sort of a background memory for many of us, and that's really been kind of fueled by nostalgia. But what's happening with this national conversation going on is it's really awakening a lot of unknowns and a lot of uncertainty. We suddenly realize, like, we don't know a lot about where these decisions come from and how they get made. So, my goal is to offer you transparency tonight, and by talking about these three things, we want to talk about school libraries' mission and purpose, what it is that we're here for, collection development and management, really just how that works, kind of a peek under the hood at a high level, and some opportunities that we feel like we've got for improvement in our process through the district, especially by increasing engagement from our stakeholders. When we talk about our mission and our purpose, I think the number one misconception about libraries is that they are about books. The truth is, they are about people. And that's important, because otherwise, what are those books for? So, what you're seeing on the screen there are some excerpts from our most recent working vision. School libraries are dynamic centers designed to welcome, motivate, and inspire the entire school community. Our goal is to develop a culture of innovation, achievement, and collaboration in every library in every school. Crucial to understanding school libraries, if we look at those italicized phrases, the entire school community in every library in every school, is that libraries are not only about people, they're about a lot of people, which is a complex system to balance. And so, our commitment in that complex system is that, at its root, school libraries exist to inform and empower students. We do that through our instructional programming and research and inquiry instruction, our collections of resources in a wide variety of formats, our facilities as gathering places and incubators of ideas. And we are committed, through all of that work, to creating and maintaining safe and engaging environments where students can think, create, share, and grow. We do that because it's the best work of libraries, and more importantly, we do that because it's right for kids. Libraries have a reputation for being kind of stolid institutions, but they are living organisms. Our collections are ever-changing to meet the unique needs and interests of our students and our schools. This is a thing that we know, most library collections are inherited. Our staff will change, our curriculum will change, the high-demand skillsets of our graduates will change, the funding structures and sources that we're working with will change, the popular authors and series of what goes on the shelf will change, publishers' trends will change, and even the culture influences impacting our children's choices will change. So, we know that that's a thing. This is built into the structure of libraries. They will live, and they will grow. But there are three things that we want to assure the families and students of Knox County can expect as constants, that they can expect from every school in our district. In Knox County, our libraries will be managed by highly qualified, trained professionals. Our school collections will be safe, inclusive, age-appropriate, and our collections would be tailored to meet the unique needs of each school community. These are things we believe in, they're things we're committed to upholding as steady values across our broad and complex district. I want to talk a little bit about who our school librarians are. I think this is very important to understand in this national conversation, that not every district has the advantages that we have in Knox County in terms of the staffing and the support structure that we have. Since we do have these blessings available to us, we are ambitious, that we want to create the best quality school libraries possible. So, in Knox County, every school library is managed by a trained professional with a teaching license. These are educators. Every one of them has a master's degree or higher. They have extra qualifications beyond what we expect of the entry level for teachers, and they have a content area endorsement on their license in library media. So, they have a minimum of 21 graduate coursework hours in the specifics of managing a school library. Their duties include managing the collections, for sure, also delivering research and inquiry instruction, and supporting classroom instruction and programming all across their schools. They also work with individual students, and so they're responsible to create a safe and guided library experience for every student. We're very blessed here that our librarians are able to participate in ongoing professional development as well, specific to libraries. That's a unique advantage of Knox County in standards-based instruction and best practices in collection management. This is a look at the collection development process. It's going to fall in four main stages. The first of those is going to be needs assessment, where they're going to identify gaps in the collection, they're going to look at requests that people have put in, they're going to look in at the curriculum, at interactions with teachers, at observations they've made of people as they interact with the collection, and they're going to identify all those areas to better serve. So, they're going to develop a strategy based on looking at their collection and figuring out what it is that we need. And at that point, they go to the selection and acquisition stage. That's where they're going to look at those needs. They're going to go through catalogs, they're going to review professional sources to identify a variety of resources that are going to meet those identified needs, obviously within the funding available, and that can be an interesting puzzle sometimes to work out. Librarians love that challenge. Step three is access, which is not actually about the purchasing process, but it is critical to collection development. That's where you do all the things that are visible on books. You apply the spine labels and the barcodes, and certainly put them on the shelf, but also you design your signage, and you figure out where in the facility that the different sections will go, because all of those access pieces are going to affect how people use the collection and whether the items that you've got are actually useful to people. And then in that stage four, evaluation, this is where you're going to consider the collection, especially given that, as we said, collections are inherited, and sometimes things reach the end of their usable life for one reason or another. So, librarians will sit down, they'll look at the balance, they'll look at what has come in, they'll look at usage, they'll look at how it's really meeting the needs, and they'll make the decision about what needs to exit the collection. And we do that for the same reasons, we call it weeding. We do it for the same reasons as you would weed a garden, right? It's not about what you're removing, it's about what you're making room for, so that it can grow and thrive. These things are a circle. They go around and around, and that's important to recognize, because you don't ever get done with that work. And each stage is going to affect the others. Sometimes you move backwards, because that's how the workflow goes. I think it's very important, at this stage, to look at that note in the center, is that relevant to this conversation, is that at any point in time, if a librarian, just in the course of their work, realizes that they need to stop and evaluate something, they do in the moment. Sometimes you can, like, something will just catch your eye on the shelf, and you think, that one's done, or a student will turn something in, or you'll realize it as part of conversation with a teacher, or something like that. And so, we do want to make sure the board knows that whenever something is not right for a collection, librarians look at that as part of their regular and ongoing duties. So, that can be something that we can handle as needed. We know we need some clarity, because this has been part of the questions that have been asked about what happens when a book is challenged. We know, we believe, that our collection development process that we've been discussing is robust and high-quality, but as with anything involving humans, it has some subjectivity. And our board policy, you can see on the sidebar there, actually even calls that out with this "because" opinion. with this "because opinions differ" clause. You know, sometimes you make a choice, and then you'll look at it later, and, you know, there may be some questions about that choice, and that's why we have the challenge process. The national conversation around us has had some heated rhetoric about book banning. And one thing I have really appreciated about our board's conversations over the last two years is that what we're talking about is reviewing books for age-appropriateness and best fit to school communities. From the perspective of Knox County school staff, that's what we want too. We want to see the best outcome for our school audiences, and we want to ensure our students are taken care of. We respect the fact that collections naturally grow and change over time, and a thoughtful reconsideration process is just part of that cycle. If we're doing high-quality work, high-quality work includes room for rethinking. So when that comes to a book challenges, books can be challenged for a variety of reasons. There's a whole gamut. We've seen anything from concerns that a material is just too scary for a given audience, all the way to the other extreme of is material too explicit or obscene. And what I would want to assure everyone is that, in our district, every concern is treated seriously. Every effort will be made to resolve the issue as close as possible to the student. With more specifics about what happens in that challenge, our current process, step one is going to be always to make an effort to resolve concerns individually. And what that looks like is it's just going to mirror anything else in the school where there may be a concern. Staff in our schools are always going to want to partner with parents to work out what's best for their child. So an example of that specificity to library concerns, in the late 90s, early 2000s, there was a growing concern with a then newly popular series called Harry Potter. And the concern was that children would learn witchcraft and that this was in opposition to deeply held religious beliefs. That would have been a case where a librarian would have been, in terms of individual rep solutions, a librarian would have been happy to talk to that parent and to ensure that that particular child doesn't have access to that particular title and make some offers to guide them to a better choice. You know, if there was ever a case where a parent had this concern and a child said, "But I like this," it's part of the librarian's expertise to be able to say, "What do you like about it? Because we can find you something else that has those qualities." And that's part of what they do. They want to create safe spaces for our children. When we can't work it out individually in that manner, our I-212 policy and procedure are what govern that process. And kind of the big step to there, it's multiple steps in API-212, but essentially, we would form a school-level committee to review that material if the concern cannot be resolved individually. That school-level committee would make a decision, if needed or desired, on the point of the person with the concern. That can be elevated in step three to a district-level committee to review that material again, if it's not resolved. The end of that district-level committee is to make a recommendation to the board, and the final decision on an instructional material, of course, rests with the board. One thing that has been new in the last couple of years with the Age Appropriate Materials Act is that there's now a process for appealing those decisions to the state if the matter is still not resolved at the district level. And so our policy does inform individuals of their right to do so, if needed. So as we review this, we feel good about the solid work that has been done on our reconsideration process in the past. That I-212 procedure hasn't actually changed much in revision cycles over the last few years, and we feel that's a pretty good sign about the fairness and the balance that it represents. But of course, in Knox County, we're always interested in how we can improve our systems to better serve our people. This conversation has been an excellent opportunity to stop and take a close look and make sure that our practice is as strong as it can be. Through that process, we've identified some opportunities to improve and engage more people. We recognize that we can do more to get those voices at the table, and we want to commit to that growth. So we'll talk a little bit about what we currently like in the process and then what we want to commit to in those improvements. So what we like about that current review process that we've just talked about is that it allows decisions to be made at the point that's closest to our students. We believe that's really important. That thing number one is knowing our kids, and that decisions need to be made right there where our knowledge is. We also like that it's narrowly tailored to specific concerns. We can zoom in on exactly which materials are causing discomfort and treat those at a granular level. It's also responsive to the distinct needs of our individual school communities by starting at that building level, because we recognize that different parts of our community may have different needs and different pressures and influences that are impacting how a collection needs to look for each of those buildings. Where we want to improve, it is clear that Knox County Schools' families want to be included in this work. And we love that, because inclusion is one of those values that, on an earlier slide, we just committed to holding constant for you. We want our families involved, and we know that the work will always be stronger when we have multiple perspectives in the table. We also recognize that this complex work is a big lift for each building's individual librarian. So by harnessing the network power available in KCS, again, one of the unique advantages that we have as a large district, we believe we can take better care of our staff and keep their time and energy where it belongs, which is taking care of our kids. So how to do that? We'd like to launch two new elements to add to our collection development and management process. We're looking at the formation of school library councils and sensitive title review committees. We believe these two elements will strengthen our processes now and also for the long run, because we want to make sure all the people we support now and in the future are taken care of. The school library councils. What we're looking at is creating small groups at each building, five to seven stakeholders. There will be some room for customization for each building, because they all have different staffing. But we expect that to usually look like a librarian, a principal, or their administrative designee, a classroom teacher, a school counselor, and at least one parent or guardian. We think there's room, given a school's needs, to maybe double up on some of those roles and just make sure that this looks like how the school needs it to be. But what this group will be engaged in is really thinking about those processes in that collection development management cycle, identifying library needs, collaborating on what those new titles should be as they're added, collaborating on what that removal looks like as they get to the evaluation stage, and especially on deciding on recommendations from the sensitive title review committees, which we'll talk about in just a second. When we look at this, the librarians will remain the expert curators in our building. We're not trying to usurp that role. And, but we recognize that formalizing the process of including stakeholder input, which is something our librarians have always done anyway, but this will formalize it and make sure we're doing it with equity. We think that we will arrive at a richer and more robust service for everyone. And this engagement at these different points is going to allow us a couple of different places to get more perspectives, especially on some strategy for aligning funding to needs, since that is always tricky. Looking at how collections grow, and that includes donations as well as purchases, making room, sometimes physical room, in the facility. A lot of schools are interested in renovation in their libraries as a community space. So how do we do that, to serve new and emerging needs? And also to make sure that any guidance we provide at the district level is going to be implemented in a locally responsive and school-specific way. So that district-level guidance is where the sensitive title review committee comes in. So we're aware that certain titles are considered especially sensitive, and those come especially in the areas of drugs, sex, violence, language. These are things that are known in the field, and those titles require complex decision-making in a library collection. So what we want to do is form a committee structure that will support that complex decision-making. What we're looking at is three committees. These will be composed as librarians, as expert curators. There'll be a group of five at each grade level, so one from each region at elementary, middle, and high, so 15 people. And these folks will be responsible for a proactive process of reading and evaluating titles that may be sensitive in their content on a schedule that would be established and facilitated by my staff as a district-level support. What these folks will do, through their work reading and evaluating these titles, is they'll be responsible to make a recommendation that will then pass down to the school library councils. They'll make a recommendation about how a sensitive title would be handled, but that's at the district level. We hope that this will take the work. But the decision, then, will push down to the building level through these school library councils. So the school library councils will be able to decide whether to follow that district-level recommendation, or if they don't feel it's a good fit for their school community, then they will be that much better informed then to send that title through their own formal reconsideration process at the building level, through our existing process. Our challenge to these review committees is to provide an unbiased evaluation to the school library councils, so that each of them can make a strong decision about keeping or removing any books. Our goal is to grow capacity in the district for supporting complex decisions so that we can take care of everyone involved, and that's our families, and that's our staff, and that's most especially our students who may encounter these titles. We hope this structure will provide support from the district level, but feed it down to the school level for action. We also hope it's going to harness our librarians' expertise and honor what they bring to the table, but feeding that decision-making back to multiple stakeholders and ensuring that we have all those views represented. What we hope for is that by adding these two committee structures to our full cycle of how collections are developed and managed in Knox County, is we see this as beneficial, because it's a proactive approach. Our existing processes, while we believe they've been robust, they've been reactive. They've waited for a concern to come in. This gives us a chance to really increase the amount of weight that we're putting on that evaluation process and make sure that we have good thinking in on the front end. We like that it shifts some of the workload and the decision-making from individuals toward groups. We know that one of the truths of working in public education is that our staff is overstretched. We hope this will be a valuable support to them and help them feel supported. And it helps by adding more perspectives to that development and review processes, which we believe is critical for partnering effectively with our families, which we know is the place where we want to grow. We believe we can do all of this while remaining responsive to each unique school community and ensuring that each building gets what it needs. So in summary, I think it's important to note that this complexity that we're talking about isn't new. It's just the nature of the work. It is how libraries are. But it is an excellent opportunity for us to take a close look at it and see how we can improve in that area. Because of that complexity, there will be times where we need to remove titles from a collection. There will also be times where we receive complaints or concerns, and those titles will not exit the collection. If we've done our job right with an unbiased review process, we believe we will catch each of those cases. And regardless of the outcome, we will always take those concerns seriously, review them appropriately to the best of our ability, because we're committed to creating those safe and engaging environments for all students, and title review is a valued part of that process. We want to make sure that every member of our school community is treated with the attention and the dignity that they deserve. So we are excited for this opportunity, moving forward, to involve more voices and perspectives and be more proactive in that work. Our immediate next steps, so that you can know what to expect. We are starting this spring, we're going to be doing the planning for those school library councils. We want to make sure that we have put, to the best of our ability, some protocols and things together so that we can support schools as they form those. We're also going to be piloting the sensitive title review committee process. These are three books that we're looking at for the three grade levels to test the process. These are just titles that we're aware of, whose content is considered sensitive, and they're all considered sensitive for different reasons. So we hope this is going to give us a good sample view on how the sensitive title review process will work in a variety of cases as we see how that work may take shape. Over the summer, our professional development for librarians will be focused on collection evaluation and weeding. And as we start next year, we'll look at actually forming those councils, fully launching the sensitive title review, and of course, continued professional development as those needs emerge. What questions might you have?
Thank you, Sarah. Do we, board members, do we want to have the public forum speakers come up and we can listen to what, and then we could direct questions to you after that, Sarah? Does that sound okay? I know this is more of a unique situation, since it's a presentation with speakers versus a voting item. Does that sound okay with you, board members?
I, do we, how do we want to do? Because I do have some specific questions just for her about this process.
Oh, yeah.
But then I don't know if, like, we're, if we're talking after.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I was, I was thinking that the public forum speakers could come up and speak, so we could hear them. And then we could have our discussion, and Sarah will still be here, and we can direct questions to the process and everything. So we will, we will have a discussion for sure. Yes.
Thanks, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
To be continued.
So we have several public forum speakers. Stacy Reese, if you will come up and state your name and county residence, and you will have three minutes.
Hello again. I'm Dr. Stacy Reese, and I live in Knox County. One of my students informed me last week of my public forum speech from December and made its way onto a group's homepage. They also pointed out the logical fallacies apparent in that video, such as red herrings and ad hominem attacks, but that's neither here nor there. Upon looking at the page, I stumbled across a value section which had four things listed. One of those was "we build relationships." That caused me to wonder, relationships with whom? The video in question denigrates Knox County's teachers as being solely responsible for fourth-grade reading achievement scores, so it's not building relationships with us. Maybe it's there, but I haven't seen any outreach to other parents' groups, so I can't say relationships are built there either, so I'm still left wondering. Further surfing the site led me to a Better Books page for KCS. An avid reader myself, I wanted to see what that list entailed. What I found were books that were written by conservative Christian authors supporting Western religious ideas and propaganda-filled nonfiction, written by far-right-leaning conservative authors and even Fox News correspondents. One book in particular caught my eye, a children's book titled "The Plot Against the King: 2,000 Mules." This story is about a kingdom plot to elect Sleepy Joe over King Donald. I am 100% certain that my child will not read this book, because it's based in falsehoods and name-calling. I'm also 100% certain that I would never ask for this book to be removed from a library, because that's limiting access. If I don't want my son to read a book, he won't read it. That's, it's that simple. I would never deny access to books to other people's children, because that's an overstep of my role as a parent. I'm responsible for parenting my child, not all of Knox County's children. A six-month longitudinal study conducted in 2022-23 found that students' reading scores increased after educators added diverse books to classroom libraries, an average of three points higher than the national average. Classrooms that added bilingual titles and titles representing LGBTQ+ community had the greatest growth in student reading scores, averaging anywhere from 4.5 to 7 points higher than the national average. Student reading time increased by an average of four hours per week after educators added new diverse books to their classroom libraries. 70% of students more often chose books to read that served as mirrors in which they could read about characters and experiences that reflected their own. I can respect these ideas where the people are coming from. It's a place of genuine concern for their children. It's a place of genuine concern for their children. I am just like them in that respect. What I can't get behind is a politically motivated agenda and unwillingness to compromise. Those who created a nationally circulated book ban guidance document that contains disinformation and the web curators for Book Looks don't know Knox Countyans. This doesn't have to be an us-versus-them issue. We all want what's best for our children, and let's make Knox County the model for compassion and collaboration for the entire nation. Free people read freely, and again, you are all welcome in my classroom at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Sadie Barangin. Sadie, if you'll state your name and county of residence, she'll have three minutes.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm Sadie Barangin, and I'm in Knox County. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sadie Barangin, and I'm a current senior at West High School. I'm the president of the Library Ambassadors, which is a group that works closely with our school librarian and West students to promote the library and its resources. I'm here today to discuss how completely removing books in Knox County high schools would restrict diverse perspectives and invalidate students' real-life experiences. As Dr. Reese had mentioned, windows in literature provide readers with the chance to explore perspectives that differ from their own, while mirrors allow readers to see themselves through the texts. It's vital for students to feel represented in literature, and it is equally important for them to understand viewpoints and ways of life that go beyond their experience. West High School's website declares its goal to foster, quote, "open-minded and caring young people." However, book banning deprives students of the chance to explore both the experiences of others and of their own. The majority of books that are currently facing bans across the nation surround topics such as sexuality, abuse, and inequality. Banning these books does not erase the fact that even students grapple with these experience, experiences, and deserve to receive support in literature. One of the most common arguments about these books is that they are sexually explicit. However, according to the American Library Association, the inclusion of sexual content in a book does not automatically make the book legally harmful to minors. The American Library Association also states that the legal test for obscenity emphasizes how works need to be reviewed as a whole in order to determine what is legally obscene. Because of this, understanding the context of a work is vital. For example, George M. Johnson's 2020 memoir, All Boys Aren't Blue, is targeted for ages 16 and older, an age range that includes half the student population at West High School. The book explores Johnson's personal experiences as a queer person of color. The sections of the text that are labeled as sexually explicit are not intended to encourage promiscuity, rather they are included by the author to honestly depict significant moments from their life. These scenes do include sexual experiences, but their context is one of trauma, growth, and recovery. Banning books that explore controversial topics such as these prevents students from finding comfort and representation in literature. These experiences are real and impact students as much as adults. These scenes only constitute a small portion of the overall story, which is the case in many of the books that groups across the nation are attempting to ban. Texts that highlight the voices of underrepresented groups and that touch on controversial topics provide an opportunity for students who resonate with the themes to find their mirror in the library. I believe it's crucial to consider how the overarching messages of the books on the banned book list could impact high school students. If a book has the potential to help a student feel valued, accepted, and understood, I strongly advocate for its inclusion in the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Sadie. Amelia, if you will state your name and county of residence, she'll also have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Amelia Bumpus, and I'm with Knox County. Hello, my name is Amelia Bumpus, and I am another member of the West High School Library Ambassadors. I want to demonstrate the importance of context by reading an excerpt from a book available in every Knox County school. "So the man seized his concubine and put her out to them. They wantonly raped her and abused her all through the night until morning, and as the dawn began to break, they let her go. As the morning appeared, the woman came and fell down at the door of the man's house where her master was until it was light. When he had entered his house, he took a knife, and grasping his concubine, he cut her into twelve pieces limb by limb and sent her throughout all the territory of Israel. I don't think most of you would argue that because the Holy Bible contains this passage from Judges and other violent and sexual content, that the Bible should be banned from our schools. The comfort and guidance some find in the Bible as a whole outweighs certain disturbing verses. This is an example of the importance of context. It is the same with some of the books you have seen excerpts from. Taken as a whole, these books have value and can help high school students process their own experiences. Did you know that the suicide rate for teenagers is more than double in certain communities? Books tell us that we are not alone. Parents who have raised their teens with a strong moral foundation and the ability to think freely should not be scared that a book could undermine that. It's disingenuous to think that teens aren't exposed to far more graphic content through other types of media, specifically the internet. Please take this opportunity to show students what our freedoms mean, not to engage in censorship and government overreach. Thank you."
Adriana, if you'll state your name and county of residence, she'll have three minutes.
I'm Adriana Aguilar, and I'm in Knox County. Hello, I'm Adriana Aguilar. I'm a library ambassador at West High School as well, and I'm here to talk about the effect of banning books. Banning books with sexual content will not stop teenagers from engaging in sexual activities. More restrictions won't fix these problems, and in fact, it's more likely that they will just turn to a different source that could be potentially dangerous or harmful. For these reasons, sexual education is incredibly important to the safety of our students. Students need to be aware of information on sexuality and gender. High school is a time of exploration and learning. Getting out of high school with no sexual or romantic knowledge leads to an underdeveloped adulthood. Considering this, there should be more sexual resources available to teens in high schools. According to Education Week, 17% of banned books in 2022 detailed teen pregnancy and sexual abuse and assault. How do we expect teens to avoid or know about these life-altering things and how to prevent them without information regarding it? According to Adolescent Pregnancy Prevention Program, pregnant youth aged 15 to 17 reported a much higher drug use than non-pregnant youth. National Library of Medicine also states that the pregnant youth have a higher suicide rate than non-pregnant youth. Banning books will increase teen pregnancy, teen suicide, and drug use. As a result, and also allow for the possibility of students to be harassed by strangers, supposed friends or mentors, and even family members, without the knowledge available on how to handle these situations, or if the situations are even something to be worried about. This gives predators a large hand in taking advantage of and manipulating students that don't have access to this necessary information. The ban also targets minority groups all around the board. It's no coincidence that these groups have a higher rate of teen pregnancy due to the lack of resources available, available to them, according to the Office of Population Affairs. Also important, most teens aren't aware of how you can get hurt doing unsafe sexual practices. These books provide helpful tips on self, on self-pleasure, which prevents teens from accidental self-harm. Having sexual outlets is healthy, not something to restrict or demonize. Teenagers are stressed. Taking away outlets prevents a healthy release. It's strange how focused people are on censoring these types of books that would help, that would help students practice safe sex. You were doing these exact things as a teenager, looking at similar material and masturbating. It is part of growing as a person. Allowing outlets for teens will prevent injuries and decrease teen pregnancy. Please consider this before passing this bill. Thank you for your time.
Kaylin? Kaylin, if you'll state your name and county of residence, she'll have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Kayleen Letzinger, and I'm from Knox County. Tonight, I'll be discussing the negative impacts of book banning on the circulation of ideas using U.S. court rulings and the United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the so-called roadmap for freedom and equality. Banning books undermines both a student's intellectualism and their ability to participate in a democratic society. Without exposure to varied topics, students face susceptibility to misinformation and will lack the foreknowledge to prepare them for adulthood. The 2009 court case American Amusement Machine Association versus Kendrick held that people are unlikely to become independent-minded adults and responsible citizens if they are raised in an intellectual bubble. Having access to a variety of books will enhance a student's critical thinking skills and foster informed citizenship. Furthermore, book bans actively hinder authors' abilities to express themselves and disseminate knowledge. Banning a contentious book reveals narrow-mindedness and shows a blatant disregard for inclusivity. In the 1982 Supreme Court case Board of Education versus Pico, the court held that the school board may not remove books from school libraries simply because they dislike the ideas in those books. Even the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the moral compass of modern nations, recognizes the necessity of multiple ideas circulation through books. Article 19 states that everyone has the right to freedom of opinion and expression. This right includes the freedom to hold opinions without interference. Book removal infringes upon this notion and underscores the inherent value of allowing diverse voices to be heard. Moreover, books targeted by bans sometimes grapple with controversial subjects such as racial equality and sexual identity. The Human Rights Watch posits that how any society tolerates those with minority views will often speak to its performance on human rights. So what does banning books that deal with minority groups say about the United States? With these court rulings and the Declaration of Human Rights in mind, it is necessary for us to consider the consequences of silencing voices we disagree with. After all, our country cannot be the land of the free if people aren't allowed to express themselves. We must do our utmost to create a society in which sharing ideas is celebrated, not censored. Thank you.
Jonathan, state your name and county of residence, she'll also have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Knight, and I'm a Knox County resident. I'm also a library ambassador at West High School. I work closely with the library and its books, and I'm familiar with its systems as well as how they are managed.
Sorry, Jonathan, you stepped forward just a little bit, but I'd like to begin with the other one.
Yes. Should I restart, or is that good?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. I work closely with the library and its books, and I'm familiar with its systems as well as how they are managed. That being said, I'm here today to discuss the options we can take instead of banning library books. I can confidently say that book banning is not the only option for protecting the decisions of parents to select what, what education their children have access to. And in fact, banning books is absolutely the most harmful option that we could take here. To discuss some other options, I want to start with this. Some schools have the ability for parents to opt out of their students checking out certain books, or certain genres of books, or books that contain certain themes. That is the type of bill that needs to be passed, if anything at all. Not a bill banning or removing these books entirely. And in a way, this system, this type of system is already implemented at West High School through our cafeteria. Recently, parents have been able to view everything that their student purchases, purchases, so they can better monitor and implement their own parental decisions from there. This gives parents freedom to decide what is best for their individual child or children. This is not a hard system to implement or enforce. That being said, book banning is a direct infringement on the rights of parents who actually disagree with these bans. Parents who either want or don't mind their students reading or having access to this information. It isn't fair to simply bar students from information to the students themselves or the parents in question, especially when better options are available. I can assure the board that libraries will work with you to ensure that students aren't reading things that don't comply with their parents' desires, but they cannot work with book bans. It's also necessary to consider the ramifications of banning these books. What's going to happen next? What's the big plan? How many more books will be banned from our school libraries? To what extent will these bans be allowed? Eventually, will there even be a library for students to find solace in? Book banning destroys libraries, no matter how small the ban may be. Please keep this in mind, and students, when you vote on this bill. Thank you for your time.
Matt? Matt Blackman? Matt, if you'll state your name and county of residence, she'll have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Matt Blackman from Knox County. Chair Henderson, thank you for moving us earlier, because after this meeting, I will leave you to your hours of work, thanklessly largely, because my family tomorrow will head to a dreaded university down south. I won't say which one, but it's not orange, unfortunately. Well, we will attend an invited honors, honor celebration where my daughter, who graduated at the top of her class at Bearden High School a few years ago, having made one of the rare perfect ACT scores, is on a full academic scholarship. I have no clue what she'll be tapped in tomorrow. I suspect I'll cry. Why? Because that's what I do when you have these emotional moments. I'm proud of Knox County schools. Are you perfect? I hope not, because then I wouldn't belong here. I'm proud of the work that you guys do as public servants, which is largely thankless in a very polarized environment. These kinds of conversations are not new. They're just so much louder these days, and they get magnified. Hundreds and thousands of years ago, there were debates about schools, perhaps not in Knox County libraries, but in access to materials and access to other things. It's not a new story. It's a loud story. It's a story characterized by anger and fear and threats and aggravation. That's not how people dialogue. That's not how people learn. Oh, it gets headlines, it gets clicks, and oh my goodness, does it get attention. But that's not education. Only a few weeks ago, I spent over 120 hours with a large collection of Knox County high school students. Why would I do that? Community service. I was convicted, but I was innocent. No, that, that's, that's a joke. It's okay to laugh. That's a joke. It's not a good joke, but hey, I'm a dad, right? I was on a chaperone field trip when Bearden High School went to the St. Patrick's Day parade, and oh my goodness, did they represent you well. But after 120 hours, coming back on a bus, they smelled. I'd like to say they smelled good. They, 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 they didn't. It's not true. But you know what I did hear? I heard all kinds of things. None of it bad, but it's the kinds of things teenagers talk about. And people, it's not about slicing pages out of library books so they can have fear and things. It's real life. These teenagers deal with stuff that you and I never faced. Why? I don't know. It's just how it is. We help them by educating them, by giving them access to resources, by trusting our highly-educated professionals to guide us all. Don't ban books. Let's encourage teachers. Thank you.
Susan? And I'm sorry, Susan, I have total trouble reading the last name. I apologize. But if you'll, state your name and county of residence, she'll have three minutes.
It's Susan Granky. Rhymes are cranky, but I'm not cranky, I promise. Good evening, esteemed board members. My name is Dr. Susan Granky. I reside in Sevier County, but work in Knox County. Over the past 20 years, as Director of English Education at the University of Tennessee, I've trained over 200 English teachers, many of whom have gone on to hold leadership positions in the district and the state. Another hat that I wear at the university is Director of the Center for Children's and Young Adult Literature, so I read a lot of children's books and young adult novels that are published every year. One of the things I'm paid to do at university is stay abreast of current research in adolescent development and adolescent motivation to read. As someone with expertise in these areas, it's frustrating to hear again and again the false narratives about adolescent readers and quote-unquote "sensitive" titles that would-be book banners keep xwording. Book banners cries that books that are being called sensitive titles are dangerous or damaging or inappropriate for teen readers fly in the face of what rigorous empirical research actually says about these books and what they do for teen readers. Research published just this year, research based in real classrooms with real teachers, with real students and their parents, finds that when adolescents read so-called sensitive titles, they actually help teens do a couple of things. They help them develop positive relationships with their peers, with their teachers, and with their parents, especially when their parents are reading these books and talking about these books with their teens. Sensitive titles also help adolescents learn to empathize with others and take on others' other perspectives, thus helping to develop moral, moral judgments, helping teens figure out what they stand up for and win. These books also help adolescents develop personal agency or the belief that they have control, some control, in their decision-making and actions. These books help adolescents learn to self-regulate their emotions and behaviors. They help adolescents develop reading competence, and they allow teen readers to understand the consequences of bad decisions in a safe space without actually having to experience them, making it less likely that they would engage in risky behaviors in the first place. Research supports that these books don't hurt teens. In fact, they can be very helpful and valuable to adolescent development and in motivating teens to read. I appreciate the work that Sarah Surles and the librarians in Knox County schools are doing, and I would just suggest to maybe add teen voices to the school library councils. And I would love to see a parent-teacher-teen book club as part of that council work. and I would love to see a parent-teacher-teen book club as part of that council work. Let's truly engage and read these books together and talk about how they can be helpful in adolescent development and adolescent motivation to read. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean? Sean, if you'll state your name and county of residence, she'll have three minutes.
Sean Murphy, Knox County. I'm reading something that I wrote before tonight. Tonight you may hear from residents who oppose you taking action to protect children. Some will say you are banning books or censoring. This is a lie. You must protect our children from rape, incest, pedophilia, violence, substance abuse, and graphic instructional illustrations of sexual activity. There is a precedent as we deny a child an access to an R-rated movie, to MA-rated video games, or Playboy magazine. Adults call this age-restricted content. It's not the government's role or place to cover these topics with children, minors, under the age of 18. That's what this issue's about, under the age of 18. Some will call people who oppose children being exposed to this material, homophobes or transphobes. This is a lie. Transgender is fiction. A male, a male cannot become a female. Point of order, is there a rule about the audience interrupting when a speaker's talking? Is there any process with that?
There is, we're just asking that folks be respectful and listen quietly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. A male cannot become a female, nor a female become a male. Knox County Schools has a mentally ill male who likes to prance around in women's clothes while in the classroom. This is wholly unacceptable. He can act out his sexual fetishes on his own time. Sexual preference is not a necessary topic, talking about pronouns is not a necessary topic. This pronoun nonsense is teaching us that we're not teaching kids biology. There's male, there's female. The real problem here is there are groomers and pedophiles in our community who are okay with sexually and emotionally abusing children. They are angry malcontents who protect their misery on others, project their misery on others. And this is a key thing, this issue is more than just explicit sexual contact with photos and all of that. It's also emotionally negative stuff, like how to shoot up a school, drug use, violence, extreme, that's, we don't need that stuff, we need more positive things. Let's teach people, I don't know, they're rewarded in life by the value they add to the world, instead of we have 20-year-old adults who are entitled. Let's talk about how this is the greatest country that's ever existed. Instead, we are taught to hate ourselves and our country, we miss the fact that our founders gave up everything, so spoiled, entitled brats today can talk about how evil they are. Thank you.
Sherry? Sherry Garrett? Sherry, if you'll state your name and county of residence.
Hello, my name is Sherry Garrett and I live in Knox County. I grew up with a mother who loved reading and instilled that in me as a child. We used to take trips to the library together and check out books. From third grade until now, I was and am now an avid reader. As a child, I would soar on the magic carpet with Aladdin's soft mysteries with Nancy Drew and Trixie Beldon. I traveled to faraway places and had adventures in faraway countries. I've read biographies on famous women such as Harriet Beecher Stowe, Clara Barton, and Florence Nightingale. As a child, I would take whatever book I was reading, I would go down the hill to my grandmother's house, climb a tree, and read my books, so I might get away from my brothers. In high school, I no longer climbed trees, but had a spot in the woods where I would read Shakespeare, Little Women, The Secret Garden. Even now, I read daily, reading suspense novels from Lee Childs, Patricia Cornwall, Janet de Bonnovich, as well as other genres. Even right out of high school, I got a job at Los Amigos Library and I was there until I married. Reading expands the mind and the imagination. It can take you far away and bring you close to home. It can challenge your knowledge and make you want to learn. But sadly, today's school libraries are now filling up with books that do not challenge your knowledge, but instead cause harm. Sexually-explicit books with graphic text and details are being provided to children. Books such as Gender Queer, Trans Plus, which has QR codes taking children to descriptive websites with graphic imagery and video, and many others. Trans Plus so far has been founded at Austin East and Hawes High School, where it is currently now checked out. As Madam Chairwoman stated last month, these are not challenging texts, this is inappropriate content for minors. Just as our public schools cannot show elementary, anything above a G-rating, PG or 13 for middle and high schools. These books should not be in our school libraries. They are available for purchase online, so we're not asking for banning books. That is a falsehood. They're available in bookstores, and some are available at our public libraries, where I checked this out, called Fun Home. We are not asking that books be banned, simply they be removed from access as they are inappropriate. We send our children and grandchildren to public school for an education, so that they can be functioning members of society, go to college or trade school, and be able to get a job or career of their choice. Sadly, that's not happening. Currently, policy I-241-2A states that a procedure for the development of a library collection at each school that is appropriate for the age and maturity levels of the students who may access the materials, and that is suitable before and consistent with the educational mission of the school. I do not see how sexually-explicit graphic pornographic materials are a mission of the educational mission of our schools. It seems that when I hear from teachers and parents that many KCS policies, such as the cell phone policy and bullying harassment policy are not being followed, kind of seems par for the course, that this policy is also being ignored. It was seen prudent that that no longer be the case. I ask you please remove sexually-explicit pornographic content from our schools. Thank you.
Loriann? Loriann, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Lori, I'm in Knox County. First, I'd like to commend certain board members for their candid open speaking at the previous meeting. Ms. Henderson mentioned her belief in academic freedom and texts that challenge us, and went on to admit that the books brought to the board's attention were not challenging texts, and admitted that they did contain sexually-explicit imagery that is inappropriate content for minors, and I agree. For anyone in the audience who are watching that is not aware of the books and questions, the images in the books are cartoon pornography with very descriptive words included. The text and addition of the pictures and the totality of both together is completely unnecessary for use. These books show cartoons in the act of undressing each other, cartoons masturbating, cartoons giving oral sex, cartoons having sex. The topics in these books include topics of rape, group rape, group sex, adult and minor sex, sex with same genders, sex with opposite genders, just everything. It's a very expansive new genre of sexual literature for minors, and the minors part is, is what my concern is. Rise with, you went on to say some of the same, stating exposure to diverse ideas and viewpoints as being part of education. You praised the leadership in the libraries for choosing books of interest that build a love of reading, but mentioned that you may need to be tighter on the selection process, and it seemed like you were questioning how you were able to do that and how these books might have got by. That surprised me because me, I'm not an activist, I'm just a mom, and someone who kind of wishes that they didn't see some of these books, that way I didn't have to be here tonight. I was just able to go online, quick online search and saw your guys' policies, so it seemed kind of easy to me, just follow your own policies, like the ones that were shown before, the I-241, I-211, I-212. And I'm not bringing anything personal up that you didn't bring up yourself at the last board meeting. You had mentioned that, you know, you're a father and that you didn't want your daughter having access to certain things, so my question is, what about my daughter? What about all the daughters at the middle schools, even Austin East, Eleanor and Central Gibbs, because that's where most of the egregious books are? And after looking into where they were found, I saw a trend, there are the statistically lower-income schools, the less two-parent in the household schools, the lower socioeconomic schools, less PTA involvement schools, less money flowing. Essentially in schools where the students are considered more vulnerable. This leads me to believe one of two things, either vulnerable students are specifically being targeted, or the sweet children in farragut might not be getting the same stellar, challenging education, as you called it, as Austin East. So, I humbly ask that the board, when you guys consider the board or the library, whoever makes the decisions next time, that you go through your vetting and review process, whatever isn't appropriate at your farragut schools might not be appropriate for any East Knox school either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Loriann. Sherry Super? Sherry, if you'll state your name and county of residence, she'll have three minutes.
Sherry Super, Knox County Moms for Liberty Chairperson. The American Association of Libraries fall under the umbrella of the American, wait, I'm sorry, the American Association of School Libraries falls under the umbrella of the American Library Association. In 2022, a tweet made by Emily Drabinski, the American Library Association President, mentioned that she was a lesbian Marxist who wants to queer the catalog. In her 2013 paper titled Queering the Catalog, she stated that engaging queer theory and cataloging requires new ways of thinking. What is queer theory? It has nothing to do with sex, gender, or sexuality. World-renowned queer theorist David Halpern says, unlike gay identity rooted in the positive fact of homosexual object choice, queer identity need not be grounded in any positive truth or stable reality. Queer acquires its meaning from the oppositional relation to the norm. Queer is by definition whatever is at odds with the normal, the legitimate, the dominant. It is an identity without an essence. Queer is a political stance against normalcy and has little to do with sexual preference. Any mention of terms like gender identity, cisgender, gender expression, transgender, safe or inclusive, makes school administrators believe they are fighting against exclusion. In reality, you are assisting in creating future activists in the queer theory army. Queer activists think there's no such thing as a healthy, innocent child, they don't recognize boundaries between children and adults, and when activists reduce children to an empty category, society can no longer say, "We must protect children." Queer theory wants to collapse boundaries between children and adults by sexualizing children with books like Gender Queer and Fun Home, which takes us to a nasty corner of queer theory. The founder of queer theory, theorist Gail Rubin, says, listen to this, folks, boy lovers are so stigmatized, it is difficult to find defenders of their civil liberties, let alone their erotic orientation. Consequently, police aim to wipe out the community of men who love underage youth. Shocking, but many queer theorists support pedophilia. These books intentionally sexualize and destabilize children, they don't help children to be seen or educated. It endangers children, and it is not by accident, it is by design. Don't allow activist demands to cloud your judgment. Queer theory started in universities and has infiltrated K-12 education. It must be rooted out of the curriculum, classrooms, policies, and school libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public forum on this topic.
Thank you for everybody who signed up to speak. Okay, board members, we will continue on with our discussion on this presentation. I know, Sarah, what's up? Yeah, Sarah, if you want to come back up, thanks for your patience. And then Ms. Bike, you have?
Yeah, thank you. I'm curious if you could, sorry, tell me about our librarians and what it takes to qualify to apply for a job as a librarian at Knox County Schools.
Sure. My apologies for the cough, I have two children of daycare age, and germs are the one thing I share really well. So, in Tennessee, and it's regulated by the state, like other teacher licenses, there are two, three things that are required. It's the teaching license, the library media endorsement as an add-on to that license, and a master's degree. There are different ways of arriving at those three things in different university programs. You can do them all in once as kind of a bundle, if teachers take a different route to come with us, then they can get them piecemeal, but, but those are the three qualifications.
When they have the master's degree or these other qualifications, I assume that these are accredited, is that checked, that they're in some way?
Yeah, there are a couple of different accrediting agencies, and those mirror the accreditation process for any other kind of teacher education program, but there's, there's background behind that, and then universities regulate that.
Okay. What type of master's degree would they have to have? Would it be any?
You can go through it by any route in Tennessee, as long as you have the content area endorsement, the usual, what we call library school, because it makes us feel like med school, that degree would probably be either a master's degree in library science, in library and information science, or just information science minus the latter, but it'll be some combination of LIS in that case. But it's not uncommon for teachers to, to have a master's in reading, or a master's in curriculum instruction, or I had a co-librarian early in my career whose master's was in deaf education. And so, anyone with a master's in another field, if they want to come into librarianship, they can do, instead of doing another full master's degree in library science, they can do an endorsement-only program, which would be about the same length usually as if you did an endorsement program for like an administrator's certification, it's about the same number of credit hours. If you did one of those, it would be coming from one of these master's programs, graduate schools most likely, just not the full master's degree.
Okay. And then also, you talked about in the, in this process and some of the new things, that, that there would be a group of librarians. How, how were those librarians chosen?
What we hope for, and this has not been fully written out yet, but what we hope for, and what we've talked about with some people in focus groups as we've started to draft these ideas, is to the best of our ability to look at a rotation so that everybody has a chance to serve. You know, there are slightly over 15 middle schools and high schools, so if we had five members on each of those committees at a time, then in a three-year cycle, we could get through most of them, and we hope that that would be a good learning experience for each of them to participate.
Okay, thank you. That's all of my questions, I do have some comments. Do we want to do questions first, or do we want to go into comments? Is there a, okay. I'm a mother of two children, and my kids went to Sequoia Elementary, one is still at Sequoia Elementary, and I've had the privilege to spend some time in that library, a handful of mornings, restacking books for Ms. Clark, I think it's five or six years now, and I've always appreciated the collection that she's kept, and on days that she's been absent, when I volunteered, she's left little notes. And during holiday times, she always pulls out like specific holiday books, and they really seem to reflect the, what the kids want to read, and really getting them involved. And I, I feel so good as a parent that I can, am welcomed into the library and that I can be a part of that, because I'm not going to claim to be a professional in reading or books or anything like that, and I like to see what the kids are reading these days, and what my kids are interested in and stuff like that, and what other kids are interested in, because also my daughter had some reading issues, she's now in middle school, at Bearden Middle School, and I would often ask the librarian, you know, she's interested in this stuff, but she's really struggling, so it needs to be a lower level, can you give me recommendations? And I've really, really always appreciated that I had that openness, and I hope that all parents really feel welcome to kind of be a part of this. I really like that we're bringing some parents in to be a part of some of these groups, and I think that that's really important, and I think we're making some good progress in this. And then my last comment is kind of going back to talking about like books of different demographics that happen to be at other schools versus other schools and things like that. And I, I come from a very poor rural farming family, where my mom was the only of her family, and the first of her family to even graduate high school. The abuse that happened in my mom's family, I don't want to speak about, but it was not pleasant that my mom experienced, and her siblings, and my cousins, and the fact that they didn't have books, and that many of them tried to take their lives, I, I wonder if they had had books that helped explain some of what they were going through, would have helped them. And I, I welcome that, I'm very privileged to be a part of my I'm very privileged to be a part of my kid's life and have those conversations, but for kids that don't have anyone to explain what might be happening to them, I think that that's really important. So I'm really glad we're making this process better. Thank you.
Mr. Triplet?
Appreciate, I do appreciate the work of our librarians. I know they work hard and sometimes thankless, and I appreciate your work in putting this together and figuring all this out. I know that's a little bit challenging, and I understand some of the concerns. I did have a couple of questions on these sensitive titles. What is the, you know, so we've got people reviewing them, you're going to have some, you know, these are going to be reviewed, but what standard, I guess, do we hold them to? We have, you know, a policy that talks about some things, about how things are, you know, picked for our libraries and instructional materials, that kind of thing. I guess what standard will they be reviewed against?
It is difficult in librarianship to define that, because what you've done when you've published a book is you've taken a slice of reality and tried to pin it between pages. And in trying to define a standard, you have to predict what might be all those realities that we would ever be able to. And so what we find typically in the field is that the best thing that we can do is drive it back to multiple criteria. It, if there's anyone who's ever found a single standard by which things can be judged, I don't know them, I'm sure they would make a lot of money. But what the typical approach, and what the approach in our policy is, is to drive it back to quite a few different criteria, and to try to, tangled, to try to use the preponderance of evidence, and just make the best decision possible. You end up with a lot of different data points in that. And one thing that I think was really helpful from Ms. Lautner's presentation last month was really looking at how you have to, each data point in isolation really doesn't tell a story, it's knitting them together where you start to get a good understanding. And I think there's a really good parallel there with how those decisions end up getting made. So the criteria that are available in our policy, I think it's helpful just to point out, it's the same criteria in our selection policy as in our reconsideration policy. So literally, what we do in reconsideration is we reconsider, was this a good decision, and is it still a good decision? Trying to go back to that original decision point on those criteria, and give it a fresh look.
Will, and this may be a question for Dr. Keith or Dr. Ries, will there be an administrative procedure that comes out of that, that sort of lays out that criteria for folks, or?
I would say, again, I think that the criteria, coming back to the policy, exists already, just in terms of what is looked at in terms of those materials. I think adjustments to the administrative procedure would be more around the addition of these new steps that we've talked about, and being part of how we go about both managing and constantly reviewing our titles and things like that.
I guess my challenge is, you know, when I, you know, part of the catalyst for this was some books that I feel are inappropriate for the age group, you know, I don't think belong in a school. And I'm not interested in banning all the books, I appreciate a review process, I think that makes some sense. But if we're just going to review them by the same standards we always have, I guess the question is, why go through the process of reviewing? If we've already, if they're already there, right, they've been, in theory, held up to this standard, so I guess what's different? I guess I don't, I don't look at, I appreciate the review, and I appreciate the work, and I think that a review process is good, I think reviewing some of these sensitive titles is good, I guess, but if they've already passed the standard, what's going to be different the next time we review it?
I hope what's fresh in this approach is just having a lot more voices involved. The traditional approach has been, because we honor and value that expertise of the librarian in each building, and that detailed training that they've gone through, they have been positioned sort of as the sole deciders. What we really hope by the addition of these two layers is that, A, on the Sensitile Title Review Committee, we'd have multiple librarians, because they're going to look at each of those criteria differently. There will be some subjective nature. Anytime you align the content of a book against this list of criteria, it's not going to be clear how they necessarily align, and there'll be a point at which each person makes a call. And so I think when you get more people at the table, you get a much better view of how that call is going to come out. Librarians value that, too. When we've had focus groups, telling them, just getting some feedback about this idea in development, they've said, oh yes, I would love to have that opportunity to talk to my colleagues, because many of them disagree. And that's why we see different collections in different schools, in addition to, you know, trying to customize based on the feedback available. We also see different decision-making among our librarians. So I think we would see that come out as a new layer within that committee, and then I think especially the new layer would be coming back to these building-level committees, because then it's not just librarians in the process. And so we hope that all of those perspectives would, you know, given the inevitable subjective nature of some of these decisions, we hope that having all of those perspectives at the table would just bring a lot more richness to that decision-making process.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate explaining all that. And I know this probably, all of this wasn't created in a vacuum, I know you had, you know, help and folks that worked with you. And I guess I would just give a challenge, that I think what we, I believe what we need is at least a base standard, you know? I think we would clearly state that, you know, we wouldn't want pornography in the school, but, you know, if it's just up to a few votes, that could get in, right? So I would think that from a central office level, I know that we have differing viewpoints, and I wouldn't want everything I disagree with removed from the school, right? I wouldn't want that at all. But at the same time, I would think we would need like a base standard somewhere to say, like, this is the base standard that we're going to start from, and then we're going to review some sensitive titles, and we're going to look at some other things. But I would challenge you to develop some sort of base level that parents know that this kind of content is not available. And it's not, you know, every time, you know, you find the word sex in a book, we're not, you know, say, get rid of that book, you know, and I understand that. But at the same time, there should be a base standard that folks can trust, Knox County Schools won't have these, won't have these in. And then the other question, one more question, then I'll leave it up and let somebody else talk. But the state has a law related to obscene materials. Mr. Duper's not here, so Mr. Sanders did not feel prepared to answer those questions, and that's okay, I understand that. Is that something that, you know, our current protocol says it's got to be a parent from a school, you know, of a child in that school that questions a book, and that's how it gets reviewed initially? I know you're going to review sensitive titles since you find other places. The state law, how do, if I felt like something was obscene, and I don't have a child in Knox County Schools, can I appeal that decision without going directly through the normal process? Do we know?
For the state review process specifically--
Yes. Does it have to follow the process in Knox County and then go to the state, or?
It stipulates that that process is designed to appeal district-level decisions. So the expectation that is, is that if it goes to them, it's gone through the first steps.
Got you. Okay. All right.
Mrs. Horne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Sarah, for this presentation, this is helpful. I think that, you know, obviously, this is a complex issue. We've had conversations about it, and there's, it's very nuanced, and it can be complex based on various opinions. And I think that our reconsideration policy is important, because opinions do vary widely. And I think also that the good thing, I think, about having five to seven people on a group is that the trained professionals may not represent the viewpoint of the community. And so I really like that we have various people represented in that group. I think that's very important. And I think two concerns that I had made note of, and then I heard from a couple of speakers, that I would, hopefully would pay particular attention to, and Mr. Triplet touched on one of those regarding sexually explicit materials, and how books are chosen, and that kind of thing. You know, I think in our policy, and just based on what we're expected to do by the state regarding Tennessee state standards, our policies, I mean, our policy says that books should be chosen that satisfy a need for educational purpose. So I would hope that as we're reviewing books, that that is particularly noted. And, you know, I think that it's difficult to make blanket statements, but I think when we think about specifically visual images, that we need to be very cautious on what is included and offered in books, because there are a lot of examples that I don't think would add value to students, or would be supported by our Tennessee state standards, because those standards certainly don't include a lot of those explicit images. So I think based on those standards, based on our policy, I think we have some books in our schools that should not be there. So I would hope that we would take care of that sooner rather than later. And then the other, let's see, I think, or maybe that did touch on both of them. I think it actually did. That's kind of the big thing, is I understand that, as Mr. Triplet also said, I may not like every book that's in there. I'm not, I'm not saying we should look at these things with a broad brush, but I do think that we need to be extremely sensitive to the fact that we're spending taxpayer dollars on these books, and they should be books that are age-appropriate for students, and that we should not be. I understand teenagers may be having sex, we shouldn't be promoting that they do that, and we should not be spending money, the taxpayers' money, in such books. And I think we need to keep that at a very high, very high priority in our minds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horne. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Sarah. Also want to thank the community for coming out. There's many, many opinions that have been shared, and it's obviously a topic that hits homes, because it's based on values, it's based on viewpoint. And I would expect everybody in this room feels something about this topic, I would guess. And I appreciate the different, differing of opinions. I do want to give a little shout-out to West High, though, because that's where my daughter goes. I didn't know that West High had a library association, so, I mean, with student representatives, which I think is fantastic. I would never even thought to join that when I was in school. So the fact that there's students who care and are that passionate about what's happening in our libraries, I think is important, and I think it's great. Always when we have student reps, no matter what their viewpoints are, when they're coming and sharing with us, because we need to hear more and more from our students. Sarah, with that, I do have one question that I know you addressed a lot in terms of our collections at the beginning, and kind of how that works, and what a librarian does to kind of help make that work. The thing I didn't really hear, and I just wasn't clear about, is when we use the word "collection," and we think about building it, what, I know that individual collections live in individual school libraries, but are we thinking about the collection by school, by grade band, by district? Like, define the collection, I guess, is what I'm asking. And when you, in terms of the process that you laid out, when you say "collection," at what level are you talking about a collection?
Thank you for that last clarification. So in that case, we'd be looking at the building-level collection, because that's the primary, the primary set of materials that would be available to any given child. So easiest way to think of it, if you walk into West High School's library, what do you see on yourselves? That's the collection. We would also consider digital materials a part of that collection. And occasionally, you get something fun in a different format, but that would be the main thing, is looking within a building, and what is primarily available inside that building.
My assumption is that's probably a pretty intentional decision in practice. Why? Why do it at that level?
So it's intentional, it's also historical. I think the historical reason would be, was that before we had the internet, that's all we could control, was what's literally in your building. We do it that way now, because that's where the preponderance of feedback is going to come from, to inform that needs assessment. And a lot of that is, to Ms. Horne's point, coming from those educational purposes and those educational programming, because we have state standards that theoretically define a consistent experience for all of our students at a given grade level, but we know, because we've met schools, that we end up with tremendous variations, and those variations are often at the building level. So for instance, I too have a soft spot in my heart for West, because that's where I was a building-level librarian. And so one of the biggest, you know, examples from my own experience that I would give is where you might see big variations in the educational programming, is I was there when the IB program was first implemented, and I assisted with the extended essay that those students write as part of their diploma program. And what we realized as we started to teach students to write this extended essay, which was a very different assignment than anything they would get in their standard-level curriculum, that we needed to give some different instruction on topic selection. So we changed up our topic selection instruction, and what we instantly found was that students were interested in subjects that weren't being taught in their standard curriculum. They were interested in psychology, and how you interpret dreams, and the criminal justice system, and things like that. And so that really told us, we have to invest some funds here. And that was a budget strategy that other schools would not use, because they would not have that driver in their instructional programming coming from that. Given our modern technology, we do have some options to think about expanding our collections outside the four walls. Our librarians keep up a hefty traffic on our email listserv borrowing items from each other, but we also have formal lending relationships with Knox County Public Library, and, which we use occasionally. What we more often use is a lending arrangement with UT's library, primarily at the high school level, often for those kids in advanced classes, whether it's IB, whether it's AP, or something like that, to access things that aren't in our collection. And that helps us be thoughtful, too, with our use of funds, because by extending outside our four walls, we can use our funds primarily on the things we know are big drivers within our building, but we can think about how to be really efficient with gaining additional resources from the outside. So that gives us a way to kind of expand those resources, but again, based on case by case.
So is it fair to say, then, that across all of our collections, within even a particular grade band, like high school, that there would probably be quite a bit of variety
Yes.
between, and that's intentional?
Yes.
Is it also fair to say, then, that that variety has probably evolved and changed quite a bit, as culture changes, right?
Yes.
As the culture shifts, our collections will likely shift, too? And there's probably books that are no longer in our libraries, that people would have deemed pretty appropriate probably 40, 50, 60 years ago, that we as a society would no longer deem appropriate, correct? So I think one of the things that I'm hearing in this conversation, I think there's two, I'm hearing two things in the conversation. One is, what process does Knox County Schools use? What's the right process to try to get at a healthy collection that honors the variety of viewpoints and the educational purposes that our students have? I'm also hearing another conversation, and that conversation is, what is the baseline in terms of appropriateness for a given society at a given time? And that changes. And I certainly don't want to be the person who gets to make that ultimate decision for any one group of people. And I don't think, as a board member, that's really my role, or our role, is to claim at this one point, that this is the baseline of what we consider healthy or not as a society. And in that, I can also say that I have a set of values that I'm pretty, that I stick to, and that I expect my family to not stick to, because they're all human, too, and they get to make their choices, but that I want to inform them and help them understand. And so to me, in a pluralistic society, the only way you get at what is that standard at any one moment, because I think it shifts, I mean, I think it absolutely shifts. And maybe the, maybe the word is better guideline than a standard, state standards, to me, are different than what we're talking about. I would think that that's the minimum expectation that you all are operating with as librarians. I think the way you have to do that as a pluralistic society is you have to gather enough of that society, those stakeholders, to have good, hard conversations, that also allow for people to bring in their bias, because it's really hard to completely divorce yourself from it, but also to bring in good research and training, and how do we do this, right? Like, I don't just bring my bias to the table, I've got to bring some other things to the table, I've got to have other tools in the toolbox. And so to me, what I appreciate about this is, you all, before you even came, did some work to get ahead of it, and say, hey, how do we need to modify and shift and adapt-- hey, how do we need to modify and shift and adapt our process? I don't know that I'm the expert in the room to say, man, you nailed it. Or, you know, here's some other things that I might shift. I think the idea that I did hear that I actually liked was having some student representation on the school library councils. I think that could be helpful. I think, I mean, I know some folks at West High would jump up on it. And there's probably others too. But to me, that's the best, like, the best we can hope for. And again, my comments are not saying that there's no baseline. There is. But you get to that through wrestling it out. And I don't think any one group gets to own that and claim that for anybody else. And I mean that. I mean, any group. I don't think any group should get to decide that. And so, again, I appreciate the work on the process. This is not the first time that you've been before the board. And I've learned more about librarians and the work that they do. You know, as somebody who's never met one in person and had a long conversation, you know, I've got my images of what librarians are, right? And I'm sure we all do. But the reality is, I think you all play a pivotal role in our society. Because, again, as culture changes, what we access changes. Or what we want to access and what we collect and what we curate changes. The last comment I'll make is, I can honestly say, as a parent of three kids, now 19, 18, and 14, I've never fought with them about what they accessed in the library. I don't say that to minimize people who have. That's not why I say that. But I think we have a lot of other challenges out there that we have to face. And I've also learned as a parent that I cannot completely shelter and monitor my kids and what they're doing, not in today's world. I just can't. I tried to fight that battle for a little bit. I lost really bad. And to me, as a parent, I think the thing that I want to shift into and how I want to be better as a parent, is I want to be prepared to have really good conversations with my kids and help them be good thinkers and how to wrestle with the content that they are going to be exposed to, that they are going to face, whether or not I like it or not. I mean, they are. And to me, that's how I would want to posture myself. And I hope as a community, we can do that. Because what our kids need to feel from us is not alienation, but hey, you're willing to be in the mess with me and you're willing to help me kind of make decisions and figure some things out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Christie?
Thank you. And thank you, Sarah. First of all, I appreciate this and the work you do. I can't imagine being a librarian right now in the current climate nationwide. And just one question, do we have any systems in place where parents can opt their students out of materials? Or is that something we could look at if we do not already have it?
I would, it's not systematized. It's an individual basis. But I would strongly encourage any parent who's got a concern to make contact with their librarian and they want to take care of their kids. Librarians want the same thing as parents. And every school library has a public-facing website. They can find it as a branch off from their school website. And if they have any trouble, they can let my staff know and we'll be happy to help them get in contact.
Okay. So that is something parents could use, I mean, as an avenue?
Yes. Our librarians are masterful at ensuring that if they're doing that as part of a partnership with a family, that there's no stigma attached to the child.
Okay. And they would just need to reach out to the school library? Okay. Thank you. And just a couple of other notes. As far as, I mean, I think we can all agree, we do not want pornography in our schools. You know, when we talk about baselines, I do worry that maybe it will catch some of those books that we do want in our schools. So I do think we need to be careful about having very rigid baselines. Because a lot of that, you know, just, different people have different opinions. So I would be just cautioned that there might be unintended consequences there. And I do think we need to be mindful of that. I do like having more eyes and love the idea of having a parent on it as well. And I do appreciate the work you've put into this. And then, I know you all get tired of hearing me say this, but I'm going to say it again. Since we are talking about children being exposed to explicit material or predators, I would also caution parents that they need to be mindful about what their kids are accessing on their devices. And I mean, those, we were talking about social media, YouTube, streaming services, online gaming platforms. And there are people out there that want to target your children and can send them private messages and they have it right there on their phones all day. I know that's kind of off-topic, but, you know, just, it does go along with some of what parents are worried about in this discussion.
Thank you. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Triplet may have already answered my question for Mr. Sanders. Are you able to talk about the Miller Test, or is that best saved for another time?
That is best saved for another time. And these issues are very complex from a legal perspective. And Gary has done a lot of good work with the schools, helping you draft policies, helping you draft procedures. I'm not going to try to step into it at a moment's notice. So I'm going to leave that to Mr. Dubler.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer. So holding that over for another time, the thing that I would like to most point out is that our librarians have a responsibility to look at the work as a whole. And that's important too, considering all of those pieces, considering its value or its lack of value. And so if we are taking a look at a teeny piece of it or even selections from it or photos from it, then when we're looking at those, those individual pieces might very easily be considered to be inappropriate or obscene. But those pieces have to be considered as part of the whole when we're looking at it. So I would encourage board members, when you're looking at those things, to be sure that you have read the work in its entirety to make those decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Triplet?
I just want to make one more comment. I've heard several times from several different people that, you know, I know culture shifts, people change, opinions change, feelings change, communities are different. And I'm well aware of that and I understand that there are differences. And I do understand that culture does change over time. But I just simply want to say that absolute truth is not. And there is absolute truth. And if we will live by that, we are far better off for it. And if we will measure our lives by that, we will be better off for it. So that's simply all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. I agree. Reverend Butler?
So we have a policy. So let's follow the policy. And if at one level it's not resolved, you go to the next level. If it's not resolved there, you go to the next level. And then if it's not resolved, they come to the board. If it's not resolved, it goes to the state. We have a policy. We've talked about this a lot. And we end up in the same place every time. So let's work the policy. And if the policy doesn't work, then we would have to change it. But we haven't worked the policy. I haven't been on the board long. I keep on saying I'm new. I was told I can't say I'm new anymore. But none have come to the board yet. I'm not sure how many have gone to the central office. I'm not sure how many go past a certain point. I do know there are three books you're looking at. They were reported. So is that the reason why you're looking at them?
Those are books that we're just aware of that on a broad scale are widely considered to have some sensitive value. One of those has had some attention locally. I think there's plenty of room when we think about the huge perspectives, including what we've seen in this room tonight, that there's certainly room for questions on the other two. And that's where we want to really think about that proactive approach. The main reason we picked those three was thinking about the wide sources about what's considered sensitive. We really wanted to make sure that we were testing different types of books. Is primarily what you're seeing on that list. So it was important to us to thoroughly test the process by seeing how it comes out with more than one type of text. And so that's a lot of what you're seeing there.
So then if they were reported, if it's not resolved, that level goes to another level. The other thing I'd say is, I agree that there is truth. But one of the things I've found out, and a lot of people may not know, I'm a pastor. I pastor an African Methodist Episcopal church. And we have our name Zion. We call ourselves Zion. And one of the things I've found out, just from the study of ministry, I have a doctorate in ministry, is that even among church folk, there's not necessarily absolute truth. Tonight, I've heard some very eloquent young people speak. And I've heard some other folk who spoke. And I agree with some of, but both of you all have said. I sit at a point where I don't want any of our children, no matter what school they go to, to have, to be subject to information that's going to harm them in any way. But also, I don't want to have anyone to have information held from them that can help them in some way. So I think that we have a process that helps us with that. There are going to be some folk who've been trained to do that work and that they have to go through the process. And I don't think it's going to be a baseline. And the reason is because you've just got to look at each case and say, is this book a book we should have in our school? And if the answer is no, then you take it out. It could be gotten somewhere else. If you say yes and it's not agreed upon, you go to the next level. The last thing I would say is, and I say this as graciously as I can, I think you speak for your school. You speak for your community. I don't think you use someone else's community to make your point. I don't, and I'll just be honest and say it straight. When someone mentions Austin East and they're not from Austin East, you can't say what Austin East thinks. You can't say what Austin East feels. And I'm saying it as graciously as I can because my son is 2,800. And so he was, he graduated in 2012 out of Victoria and went to Penn Wharton School of Business. We're proud of all he's done. He's working hard now for his church, for his community. And I could probably say, every book he ever read, I read. And some of the books he read, I'm like, boy, you reading this? And we talk about it. And some of the things, I say, no, you can't have that. No, that's not, you know, we're not reading that. And so I'm saying this to say that we have this situation, this discussion, and we can talk about it every board meeting and it's not going to resolve it. We have a process. We have a policy. Let's utilize it. And as we utilize it, let's get better at utilizing it. Because I, for one, do not want to spend another hour talking about this at the school board meeting.
Thank you, Reverend Butler. Sarah, I just want to thank you for, you know, guiding us through this. And I really appreciate that these new steps do involve, you know, more stakeholders as an added support. I love that it is more proactive versus reactive. And, you know, you also went through the current process, which I think is important for parents, to highlight for parents. Because, you know, a lot of times, they don't know how to use that. And so you even highlighting that, I think, is a benefit for parents. I was talking to somebody recently from another state. And we were talking about book programs. And she said to me, oh, you know, we don't even have libraries in a certain community. And I assumed she meant public libraries. She meant their schools don't have libraries, because they're more rural and a poorer school system. And that shocked me. I think we take for granted that we are blessed that we have libraries. And thank you for working with us on this process. You know, I do, like I said last meeting, I do believe in academic freedom and exposure to diverse ideas, but not sexually explicit imagery. And I think that this process will help. And I really appreciate all the work that you've put into this. So thank you for that. I think everybody, oh, Sarah, did you have anything?
Nope. I was just making sure I got everybody. Thank you. Thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you. I think we should probably take a break. And then it'll give some of our guests a chance to stretch their legs or leave if they've spoken and are ready to leave. So we'll come back in about 10 minutes.
Please, in the meantime, eat more Snickers.
Now we will go into our regular agenda. Ms. Cote, would you like to start reading our items?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item seven, consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Ms. Owen?
I'm looking for it. I'm not sure if it's on the consent agenda. Is the Karnes Fair MOU somewhere else?
It's item 14 on consent, Ms. Owen.
Okay. I have a question about that. So should I ask it now, or should we pull it out of consent?
Yeah, pull it out of consent, so we can discuss it later, I guess. Yeah, we can pull it out.
Thank you.
Does that work, Ms. Cote? Okay.
Do we need a motion to pull it out?
So the motion on the floor is to approve consent agenda, so we might want to amend the motion to...
So I moved minus, so move minus number 14, if that works.
Ms. Christie, is that, can you second that motion?
Okay. So new motion by Mr. Triplett, second by Ms. Horn. Okay, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Christie, that was made by Ms. Christie. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8A, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy A100, school district, school board legal status and authority as amended.
Do we need to go back to 14?
I apologize, I thought we were moving 14 to regular agenda items, so it would be at the end.
That'll work too. That's fine.
Would you like me to read item 8A?
So moved on 8A. I don't think we know where we're at.
It's been a long evening already. Motion made by Mr. Triplett, second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8B, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy A120, school attendance areas as amended.
Motion made by Mr. Triplett, second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B110, method of election of officers as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approved second reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy B112, duties of board members.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8E, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B160, school board meetings as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8F, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B171, complaints and appeals to the board as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8G, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B230, civility code as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8H, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy C180, advertising and solicitation in schools as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8I, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy C231, surveillance, photography, video retention, and viewing as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8J, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy C260, sexual harassment and sex-based discrimination as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8K, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D130, donations, gifts, and bequests as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8L, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D140, receipt of funds at school level as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Mr. Watson. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8M, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D230, purchasing as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8N, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B180, public forum as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8O, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D241, internal school funds as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8P, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D280, fundraising activities as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Mr. Watson. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8Q, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E120, safety as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Horn. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8R, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E122, emergency, preparedness, planning, and training as amended.
A motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8S, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E123, crisis management as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8T, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E170, student transportation management as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8U, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E171, scheduling and routing as amended.
A motion by, excuse me, Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8V, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E172, agreement for pupil transportation services as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8W, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E190, food service management as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8X, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy F121. Building New Athletic Facilities as amended.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8Y, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I340. Promotion, Retention, Acceleration as amended.
Move to approve on first reading. Is that right?
Okay. Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Horn. To approve on first reading. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8Z, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I341. Uniform Grading Policy as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Horn. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A, approved Tennessee Department of Education Fiscal Year 2024. Additional Targeted Support and Improvement Grant in the amount of $823,513.95.
A motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B, approved grant acceptance agreements with Mr. Holland's Opus Foundation for receipt of musical instruments with an estimated value of $181,000 for Bearding, Gresham, and Vine Middle Schools.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Pike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Excuse me. 9C, approved Great Smoky Mountains National Park Education Program Travel Grant in the amount of $200 for Westview Elementary School.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Pike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10A, approved recommendation of Evergreen Solutions LLC to implement a new salary schedule.
There's a lot there. A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Horn.
We do have public forum on that. Do we want to do that first? Very good.
And then we'll discuss.
Paula, thank you for coming, Paula. And if you will state your name and county residence, then you will have three minutes.
Sure. Thank you. Paula Hancock, Knox County, Knox County Education Association. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Ryse. A perfect storm in the teacher labor market has formed, and our students are withstanding the worst of its impact. While the teacher shortage is being felt across many states and school districts, the most critical resource denied to our students is an experienced, fully-certified teacher. An acute deficit that threatens our students' ability to learn. Not only does it threaten our students' ability to learn, but it also reduces teacher effectiveness. And high teacher turnover consumes economic resources that could be better deployed elsewhere. The teacher shortage is real. The teacher shortage is large. The teacher shortage is growing and worse than we think. Teacher compensation is not just an issue of staffing. Effective teachers are the most important school base determinant of student educational performance. To promote children's success in school, schools must retain credentialed teachers and ensure that teaching remains an attractive career option for college-bound students. Finding qualified teachers in mathematics, science, and special education are especially challenging. The erosion of educator pay over the years, coupled with the marginalization of the profession, has led to this alarming teacher shortage we are experiencing. To recruit and retain talented teachers, school districts must address the inadequacy of teacher pay by eliminating or closing the gap on teacher pay penalty. Wages than other educated workers with similar experience is crucial to building the teacher workforce we need. As your collaborative conferencing partner, the KCA's PECA team is committed to advocating for an improved salary structure and salary increases for our Knox County Schools K-12 educators. Our educators have had long increasing day-to-day demands and responsibilities from bus duty to coaching, counseling to leading additional classes and buying basic supplies for their classes. Educators feel disrespected, undervalued, and expendable because our expertise is not treated the same as the expertise of other professionals. It has been said, and I quote, "If we generally want to do what is best for students, we must do what is best for teachers. If we are hurting teachers, we are hurting students." Inadequate educator pay comes at a high cost for schools and children who must deal with the ramifications of high turnover and teacher shortages. Now is the time for healing in our profession. Now is the time for our educators to be respected and supported. Now is the time for our educators to be restored to wholeness.
Thank you, Paula. Up next, we have Lance, Lance McCold. Lance, if you will state your name, county, residence, and you will have three minutes.
Lance McCold, Knox County. And I'm here to speak to you to encourage you to hold off on adopting this salary schedule. Since Tuesday, well, actually just Wednesday, I took some time and studied part of the recommendation, the recommendation for teacher salary schedule. And I sent you all an email. I don't know whether you've had a chance to see it, but it shows that over the course of 20 years, a teacher who started out getting the same amount of money as an administrator or some other staff person who is not a teacher would end up making $20,000 less than if they had been a non-teacher. The salary's got, the structure that this program lays out has retention bumps, it says, but it pays for, the retention bumps are actually underpay teachers, you know, make their raises lower one, two, three, four years. And in the 50 years, you boost it up to the same place it would be if there was a linear thing. What it really does is it cuts, it takes a $1,000 increase a year out of teachers on average and puts $1,000 and saves $1,000 for the district for each teacher. Now, if you want to tell the teachers how much we value you, this is not the way to do it because when they figure out that they're actually getting lower raises than people who are not teachers with it, in the system, they're going to say, well, wait a minute. You guys don't care, value us. So I want to, you know, that's something to be concerned about, but you've had two days to look at this thing, and there are other things that we don't understand about it. They're talking about compression and how adjustments they're going to make to avoid salary compression. So now what exactly does that mean? Do you, do you, board members, really understand how they're going to do that? What that is? And who the beneficiaries and who the losers are in that? There's also talking about, there's people who are already being paid over-market values. What's going to be happening to them? My conversation with Mr. Bolton suggests that what they're going to do is they're going to put them in a different salary schedule than the one they would naturally be. So they will be, it'll look like they're being paid, their over-market pay will continue as long as they're with the system. My point is, you don't really understand what's in this salary schedule. You know, we, and you don't, haven't had time to do it. You have the option of, put this off, actually understand what's in this thing, and vote on it next time you meet. When is your next meeting? I guess it's the budget meeting. But you don't really understand it, and I don't think you should vote on it now. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Thank you, Mr. Triplett. All right, we'll move on to discussion of this item. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to let the board know that I'm going to recuse myself from the vote on this. I don't necessarily have to, but I feel like I should because I have always said that when my time on the board ends, I would want to go back to my classroom. So I feel like, even though I'm not currently a teacher, that I would be voting on my own salary, and I don't think that's right. So I will be recusing myself. That said, I share some concerns about the speed with which we are doing this. I think it would behoove us to wait until closer to the budget, even if we did it as a special-called meeting right before our other special-called meeting to talk about the budget. And part of the reason I think that is because it took me until today to even think, I shouldn't probably recuse myself. That didn't even strike me until today. And that tells me right there that this is being moved a little quickly. I've had more phone calls and texts about this with really confused questions than I've had about a lot of things in a while. So I want to ask some of those questions and just also really think about the fact that what we are approving is a salary scale. A salary scale for a public school district is supposed to be public record. And we have not, not only have board members not fully seen every piece of the salary scale, the public absolutely has not seen every piece of the salary scale, and that's why they're confused. If we were doing this in a really open and transparent way, all of these pieces would have been laid out so that all of our employees understand exactly where they would be. When I looked up at the screen, I could see where I would be. I saw exactly what my pay would be if I were in a classroom today. If I were in some other positions in the district, I never got to see that. I would have no idea. If I am a custodian at Step 2, I've been in the district two years, I can't look up there and see where I'm going to be. Not only can I not look up there and see where I can be, there's nowhere I can look to see where I can be because that information is not available right now to the public, and it should be. So that is my other reason that I think it should be put off and would encourage you to do so. So my questions. I think I know the answer to this one, but I want to be sure I do. Is there anything in this that impacts career ladder funds at all?
Madam Chair, Ms. Owen, I have backup to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the answer to that would be no.
Okay, thank you. That was my assumption. And so at some point, I heard something about career ladder, not during this, but career ladder is not ending anywhere, right? That we have ever heard of. It's just rolling along fine. Okay. Thank you. All right. So next is where do speech pathologists fall in the pay scale?
So, Madam Chair, Ms. Owen, speech pathologists would not be on the teacher scale. They would be on the general scale. I do think that there was some confusion in the, in the presentation we shared on Tuesday because the teacher plan, we had labeled as the certified plan. So I think there was some confusion in who, who would be on the teacher scale versus the general scale. The general scale will have both certified and classified employees, and the SLPs would be on the general scale, on a grade band on the general scale.
So I haven't, I haven't looked deeply at the speech pathologist pay scale. So is it possible that as, as time goes on that wherever they are now, they would pass the teacher pay scale at some point? Are their increases going to be greater than teacher increases per year?
I think, Mr. Bolton, you want to speak?
So they would be, and I'll let Mr. Bolton come too. They, they would be on a different scale. So the market value for SLPs was different than the market value for teachers. So they would have a different progression. I'm not sure that I understand the question fully. They would have a different progression, so a different Step 0 and Step 20. Yes.
And they are having difficulty understanding the question as well. They, they're, they are trying to look at what is involved in their certifications to understand exactly how they, how they could even begin to determine what their pay might be. And that's part of the issue of not having this put out transparently to the public is they could also look up there and see what the teacher pay was, but they can't look and see what their own pay is. And so that's, that's a concern. Where do school nurses fall on the schedule? And what they want to know is the difference where RNs would fall and where LPNs would fall.
Sure. So RNs and LPNs will also be on the general scale. And I will say that each of, each individual employee will get a notification of grade band and specific annual salary. So grade band that they'll be on step, what that computes to annual salary for our employees that are paid on the annual basis. As you'll notice, on the general plan, what is on the general plan is hourly rates. That is what Evergreen based the study on, comparing hourly rates across all of these employees because districts pay people in different ways. We do also. We have some people working eight-hour days. Some people paid for 7.75 hours a day. Some people on 7.5. So should the board approve the general scale? Then for every category of employee, that will be converted to an annual salary for those that are paid monthly. And yes, you're correct. All of those will be posted together on the website as the full salary scale.
Okay. So then the school nurse who asked me this question said that she is currently paid on the teacher scale. And it was my understanding that that was a state requirement that we pay nurses on the teacher scale. So if we move them to the general scale, is that a problem?
So I may have to lean on Mr. Sanders. I believe there was legislation that moved through that, that did not make it to, right, that did not make it to TCA at the end of the session. But, so, so the answer is no. Only teachers will be on the teacher scale. Everyone else will be on the general scale, but RNs will be slotted in on the general scale at market value, and the same for LPNs. Is that?
Where would curriculum generalists be on the scale? Would they be listed as teachers or would they be different?
Curriculum generalists, so the facilitators or?
Any of those.
So, so yes.
Instructional facilitators could be in there?
Right. Instructional coaches, facilitators, general scale.
Okay. So looking at the bumps, this may be a question for Mr. Bolton. Looking at the bumps and using those as an incentive for retention, what kind of data was used to determine where those bumps should be for retention purposes?
Mr. Bolton may have more to add. Those would have been, would have been Evergreen's data that they used in their recommendation to us. That was part of the recommendation. So we, I don't know that I have specifics in what they considered in making that recommendation.
Okay. The reason I ask that specifically is because there was a time when five years was a place where there was a dip in teacher retention, but I believe that is now around three. And so when I look at 5, 10, 15, I'm not seeing something that aligns with where the actual dips are in teacher retention. So it concerns me that we are putting in something that is purported to impact retention that doesn't align with what the data currently is. Are there any supplements or stipends or anything else for a person who has additional endorsements?
So I would say generally, the answer to that would be no with the caveat that Mr. Bolton shared on Tuesday is that, that one of the recommendations from Evergreen also was to convene a committee to develop payroll procedures. So they didn't recommend what those were necessarily, but just recognized what, what we know is that our current payroll procedures are developed around our current salary schedule. So should we move to a new one, then, then the team needs to revisit all of those. So I'll, I'll make that caveat that there may be some recommendations that come from that team. But if you mean additional, like if a, if a, a teacher that is teaching one content area also has an endorsement in another content area, then currently, no. There, there would not be additional compensation for that.
My thinking is more of a teacher has My thinking is more of a teacher had an endorsement in a content area and went back and did additional hours for a high-needs content area, so that they could teach in that area.
So, right now, the salary study does, or the salary schedule does not compensate, or does not consider additional compensation for that, but we do still have our strategic compensation model. So if a teacher was not in a high-need area that received a signing bonus and moved into one, then they could receive that.
Okay, thank you. Looking at supplements for department chairs, I assume that would be the same?
Department chairs would receive a supplement. So that is one of the things that will not be the same next year as it is currently under the SRF-funded department chairs thing, though.
Okay. And will there be a separate schedule for coaching supplements?
Yeah, we do not anticipate changes to the coaching, the athletic coaching supplements of that. We anticipate that remains largely the same. Evergreen did not make recommendations on the coaching supplement. Primarily, as they shared, they vary. So there isn't a market value necessarily, because coaching supplements vary so much from district to district.
Okay. So are we talking about that whole page of supplements that included, it included some administrators too, on that supplement scale? Or are we just talking about the lower portion of it?
I can't see it in my mind. We're just talking about athletic coaches. There would be no administrative supplements.
Okay. What about the supplement for head band directors and middle school band directors?
I believe, Mr. Bolton can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe those would remain, lead teacher supplement. So if it's outside the scope of the position that they were hired for, so the extra duties like department chair, lead teacher, those supplements would remain.
Okay. So the bottom part of the, okay. So I would encourage board members to look at what Mr. McCold talked about. It's really hard to look at the numbers up there, which are significantly higher, and then consider that there's a loss. But the same way that we came back and talked about the reasons for not stretching out our salary scale to more years, so that teachers could get that money earlier, we're doing the opposite with the bumps. Because instead of spreading them out so that each increase is the same, we hold on to some of the money, and hold on to some of the money, and hold on to some of the money, and then in the fifth year, we equalize it. And then over the next five years, we hold on to some of the money, and hold on to some of the money, and hold on to some of the money, and then we equalize it. So more than an incentive to keep people, what we're really doing is paying for some of the plan that way. And I think we need to be really transparent about how that's working, so that people understand that, that yes, it is significantly better. We can't really argue against raises, that's hard to do. But I think it's something that we need to look at in the future, so that we don't forget that there is that piece that could make a really big difference if we did it equally across all the years, instead of holding back and then bumping up. So I would encourage us to really keep all of these pieces in mind, and to bring them back, so that we can make adjustments to them over time, and that we don't get really committed to this exact salary schedule. Because I think there are a lot of things here that have not been anticipated and have not been seen, that we are going to want to really dig into later. Thank you.
Ms. Pike?
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. So this looks like we're voting on these four pages, essentially. And I know that it's been mentioned before, but is there any guarantee that none of our teachers, or employees, or anything will be decreased in pay, or salary, or compensation, whatnot?
Madam Chair, Ms. Pike, no one is moving backwards as a result of the salary study. That is correct.
And then, what are the implications in not passing this tonight, and instead passing it in our budget meeting?
Madam Chair, Ms. Pike, that's, of course, what we will do is carry out the will of the board. What delaying may do is impact the ability to be ready, if this were to be implemented on July 1. So that's one. And then, two, at the special called meeting where there is the vote on the proposed budget, if there were changes at that meeting proposed, then that would require some on-the-spot recalculation of the proposed budget. So those are two that I can think of, but of course, we will carry out the will of the board.
My next question is that, on the fourth page, at the very bottom where it says KCS may value recognized certifications given, "may" is kind of like a very optional word. Is there a possibility of changing that to "will," or anything like that? Because I do think, like Ms. Owen mentioned, that there are many people that have put a lot into their qualifications, and they really want to know that they're going to be compensated fairly.
Right. So, yes, like Mr. Bolton explained on Tuesday, once that payroll, once the committee that Evergreen has recommended that we convene, once they develop those payroll procedures, they will be published on the website. The, Ms. Owen also pointed out, made a good point on Tuesday, that should we associate those certifications or the degrees with the position that the person's performing? So that may be something that comes out of the payroll committee. I would be hesitant to change that to "will," without considering what type of certification and what type of position.
Is there a way to say that any current one that is already being compensated in an extra way will continue to be compensated? Like, having that in writing?
So that's a tough one to answer on the spot, without considering all of them, because some of the qualifications were considered by Evergreen in making the determination of market value. So I would be hesitant to say everything. So for example, this isn't technically a certification, but the administrative supplement, that supplement scale is going away. The dollars that are there for the employee are not going away, but they will just be paid on one scale versus a base and a supplement. So with little things like that, I would be hesitant to put an absolute in, without making sure that we had considered everything.
And my next last question, to just really understand, like, what exactly we're voting on. We're voting on these four pages, essentially three pages, that have our teacher salary schedule, and then the hourly rates that are grade bands, and then this extra educational certification stuff. So if we're voting on that, is there, and I apologize if I've forgotten, and you've already said this, and you're repeating yourself, it's been a whole lot, that when you go through and start to look at where everyone is placed within this, are you getting teacher input? What is the group that's making that decision?
Evergreen Solutions is the group that built the classification rubric to place people at market value on the scale. So we are using the recommendations from Evergreen.
Okay. So are there any times where groups of teachers, or administrators, or anything are having any sort of input in this process?
So, yes, in the compensation and classification study, Evergreen conducted, released a job assessment tool, released an employee survey, and did focus groups with our employees as well.
Okay. But not necessarily, like, after we vote on, so when we vote on this, this is, you kind of already know where everyone's going to be at, based on what Evergreen has recommended?
But mostly, currently, we already know where everyone will fall, the range everyone will fall. That is correct. We will provide individual notifications to all employees, and that notification will also give them a path to ask for clarification, to ask any questions they may have. But no, the employee input was input on the job duties, the functions they perform every day, is the job description that we provided Evergreen, encompassing of the duties that they perform every day, and Evergreen used that for comparison for market value.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Triplet?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. One, just to hear, for clarity, Jennifer, are you recommending we vote no tonight? Is that correct? I know you had a bunch of questions, seemed really concerned, I just wanted to get clarity on that.
No, I thought I was clear. I'm recommending that we take more time.
Okay. And then, Sam, I know we had to cut you off, you only had three minutes, but KCA supports this decision, is that correct?
In accordance, because I know, like I said, I didn't get a chance to say it, but in accordance to the Collaborative Conference Act, the Knox County Education Association with the management team of the board for PECA collaborative conferencing, we did get consensus for this to move forward.
Perfect. For me, thank you, Paul, I appreciate it. There are a few things that are easier yeses for me than this. I don't know what else. Maybe the playgrounds for children, I don't know, that was an easy yes. That's always a good move. But, I mean, you know, Mr. Bolton, Sam McGarren, I know you put a lot of work into this, and when we vote yes tonight, you'll have a lot of work to get all this information out, get it all figured out by July 1. So your work is, in some ways, just beginning. And so I appreciate all the work. I think Knox County's done a great job, Mr. McPherson and others making the decision to pay down some debt ahead of time. I had my budget meeting today, and so the work they've done to save money in other places, to be able to absorb this whole lump sum, is pretty impressive. They put that kind of work in, and figured out a way, frankly, to find, you know, $40 million is just an incredible, that's not something you get out of your couch cushions, you know? So I appreciate the work that they have done to make this happen. And so, frankly, to be honest with you, there really are a few things that are easier yeses than raises for teachers. We have gone through Evergreen, and they have said the market value, it is their recommendation based on market value, that we do the steps the way we do them, with the extra bump in the fifth year. So that is not a taking money out of their pocket in any way, that is just a fair market value that they recommend. Nobody's getting a deduction in pay. The vast majority are getting an increase in pay, some of them an incredibly significant amount. I have heard from several principals how thrilled they are that the pay increase that their secretaries will get. They hold it all together in a lot of ways. And so I've heard just so many overwhelming positive comments, even the questions that have been asked, I felt very comfortable answering. So I just, to be honest with you, I think it would be, in many ways, disrespectful of us, to our teachers, to vote no on this. I think it's an absolute yes, and allow Mr. Bolton's team and Jennifer to get to work on figuring out how they're going to implement all this, and get all that information out to teachers. So that's my opinion on that.
Mr. Watson?
Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. McGarren and Mr. Bolton. You all have done a lot of work, and I know a lot of other people have as well, and appreciated the time I had for a few minutes before this meeting, and the time at the budget meeting, and also getting access to the whole report. That was good reading. I mean, I was really, I thought it was good work. I thought it was a good work product. And appreciate the work that's gone into it. I want to make sure that I'm clear on something. What's driving a lot of Evergreen's recommendations to us is alignment to market value. Is that fair to say?
Madam Chair, Mr. Watson, yes.
There's a lot of other objectives you could try to meet in a shift in the salary schedule. And one of the approaches that you could take, and I think this is where it gets real personal for people, is you could try to say, well, how does this job align to this job in terms of value, and compare people to one another, positions to one another? Which is not what this is doing, correct? That's not the objective of it.
That is, that's correct. That is not the objective. I believe that Evergreen would agree with our belief that every position in Knox County schools is equally important to completing our mission. And some of those, we are currently paying closer to market value than others.
Yeah. Which is why, at the end of this, no matter, if the objective was to get closer to market, there will be some who are going to experience more significant raises than others, correct?
That is correct.
And that's not an indication about how we value individual or separate positions. That's just saying, hey, the objective was to get closer to market, and this is what market looks like.
Absolutely.
That's fair? Okay. So one technical thing that I think could be helpful is, on the document that we received, the hourly rates by grade bands, that actually is not labeled the general scale, which could be helpful. I don't think people necessarily know what that scale is if they just look at it. Also, in that one, you have grades running 0 through 20 across the top. In the teacher one, you have grades running down as a column, which can also be confusing. And actually, the rows, I don't think in the hourly rates by grade bands is actually labeled. I don't know if the, I don't know if the general public, I know I don't know what 101, 102 means. I know the end result of it is, that's the classifications, and that's where you're going to put certain positions. But I think having a label on the rows could be helpful, because there's nothing identifying what the 101 and 102 is. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? I think that could be helpful, too. And so, to Ms. Owen's point, it is really easy, it's fairly easy right now for a teacher to look at this, because they're the only people on that scale, and they can say, I can kind of work my way into figuring out about where I'm going to be. But we have a whole host of employees that can't, right? And there's a decision that's been made to, in the beginning, say, hey, we're going to publish the teacher, or a draft of the teacher scale. Now, they're the only ones on it, right? So it's kind of obvious. But there's been an intention not to say where everybody else is going to be, and Sam McGarren, you already mentioned that you feel like you all have a pretty good idea where people are going to be, different positions, not individuals, based on that classification rubric. Can you share why? And I'm not asking this antagonistically, there's an intentional decision that's been made to not do that, right? You could have chose to do it. So can you take us through the thinking of why you didn't do that?
Sure. Madam Chair, Mr. Watson, yes. What we want to do is, we are very excited about this. We're excited about the impact that this will have on all of our employees. When we share the information, we want to be 100% accurate. Evergreen has made recommendations for placement of all categories of employees, also all specific employees in the district. And so Mr. Bolton and his team are meeting with every department chair in the district, and going over all of those to make sure that we haven't missed anything, to make sure that, for example, we discovered one where employees were reversed. So just checking every single employee and employee category, to make sure that they all line up before publishing the full list of employees and employee amounts.
Is it fair to say then, that you haven't made that known yet, because the last thing you want to do is retract?
Absolutely.
You don't want to be like, oh, my gosh, we goofed, so sorry.
Right.
I thought you were going to get this, and you're not, you know, right? I can get that. I mean, I get that from a process standpoint. I also get the desire of everybody who's watching this in Knox County schools right now, trying to like map themselves out, and kind of figure out where they're going to be. I totally get that, too. Also, I know, because I did read the whole packet, there's, and you all mentioned this too, there's seven recommendations, correct?
There are.
You brought, you're bringing one, only one recommendation for approval, right? Because that's the three pages we have.
That's the conversion to the new salary scales.
Right. Is there, should the board anticipate you all bringing other recommendations? Or do you feel like you have the authority through the superintendent to act on all the other ones except for this one? And then, do you have some sense about how you're going to act on the other ones? You've identified some things, like starting this committee already, that you intend to do that. do that.
Sure. So, I believe that, that right now, this is the, the only recommendation for approval. The other recommendations we intend to take in some capacity, one of them is the classification system on how we slot employees into, or how we place employees on the new scale, determining market value through the classification system. So that, that's all contingent on the new salary schedule being approved. I will say, like, like we've discussed in the individual meetings, some of the recommendations are for the future, what we may need to do in the future to maintain. So implementing those right now, we would, we would not do, because those are for some time in the future. One of the recommendations is to convene the committee, like Mr. Bolton described, to develop payroll procedures. So I, I believe that, that the vote, the one that would be required for a vote is the, the move to a new salary schedule.
That's what I want to get at. So required by what? Because I think it's important for the school system and the general public to know that there's some recommendations you all can just act on, and then there's some that need a vote, and so why is this one needing, is it requiring a vote, demanding a vote?
Sure. So their board policy does say that the board will set teacher salaries, and in, in addition to that, this is a, a huge budgetary commitment.
Sure.
And also a huge shift in the way that we, we approach compensation. We, we have not made a change of this magnitude to our salary schedules in decades, and so are, are bringing that before the board, before we move in that direction.
And then all other recommendations are really dependent on this one, right?
Correct.
Depending on what you do on this will affect all the other recommendations.
Correct.
One of the recommendations that was in there was doing some micro-studies year to year, but also doing kind of another deep dive every three to five years.
So one of the recommendations was, once we transition to the new scales, should the board vote in that direction, that if we are experiencing hard-to-staff areas on the new scales, that we consider whether specific positions should be identified for an additional salary study, and then, yes, another one of the recommendations was we consider every three to five years doing a comprehensive salary study.
So I want to hone in on that one for just a second. You mentioned when you first presented this to us last year, that you all were looking at doing a study, that we haven't done one in 20 years. I think what we don't want to do is like wake up in 20 years and realize, oops, we did it again.
Right.
So, I, I don't know where the board could act on that, if that makes sense to put that in policy or something, I don't know if that's where that should live, but the idea of codifying the practice that at least every five years we do a salary study, I think could be good, so I would kind of, I would challenge the administration to give some thought about, one, do you all really want that, but also, what's the right mechanism to ensure that does happen as leadership changes, as board changes, all the type of thing? Because that's why a salary study hasn't been done in 20 years, because there was nothing that codified it that said, we're going to do it at some frequency, right? So nobody made the intentional decision to not do it for 20 years, it just happened, right? So I would, I, and then, I think I have a que, I think it's from Mr. Bolton, and I know you all were not directly copied on the email that Lance referenced, it was only the board, have anybody, has anybody in the administration seen that email? Have you all seen that math?
I, yes, I have seen the email, I have not done the math, I have not checked the math, I've just seen the numbers.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I didn't look at his formulas and all that, he didn't send us a spreadsheet and all that, which is completely fine, but to me, the, I think what he's trying to articulate there, and I don't know if it's right or wrong in terms of his math and all the things, but I think, I think the question is, what's the total value of somebody's compensation, or a teacher's compensation over 20 years, if you break it out this way versus if you break it out this way? We know that in the general scale, I, I think this is right, that it's a 65% spread all the way down, correct? Between low end and high end. It's actually not 65% on the teacher scale, I'm pretty sure, I didn't bring my packet with me, I left it on my coffee table, I think the Evergreen notes say it's actually 50-something percent, but in my math, it's 63% every time I do it. It's, that's the difference. So two questions. One is, why is Evergreen making a recommendation for a different spread for the teacher scale versus the general scale? And then, have you, to me, it's novel in the sense of, I didn't think about it, I didn't beat Lance to it, but to me, the idea of looking at total value is probably not a novel idea. I'm assuming you all probably have done some of your own math, even if you haven't looked at his. Can you talk to us about that in a relationship to what Mr., Ms. Owen was pointing out in terms of the bumps? There was some intentionality, do it at five and, at 10, but also curious about the total value, because I think, yeah, that's worth something.
Madam Chair, Board members, think, now, this is just speculation, I've not put paper to pencil, and so I need to do that, but if you look at that percent that you've increased, what is not included in that would be the full spread of those additional degrees, so then if you add, for example, for the largest spread, $5,000 to it, you may come closer to that 68% when you're looking at the full range spread, so you have that compression because it's only on two bands. But I, I have not done the, the full analysis on the, what it would look like in terms of a career.
Yeah, and, you know, Lance, when he did it, he didn't, he sent us, if it's just equalized, but, you know, there's no way to do it for another position because we don't know where any of these other positions are going to, are going to live. To me, that's an interesting, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we necessarily postpone our decision, although if we oopsed into that, like, oh, my gosh, we didn't realize we were potentially taking $20,000 away over the life of somebody's 20-year tenure as a teacher, to me, that's like, we should probably think about that. I mean, I get the reason to, to do incentive bonuses, and a lot of what I see in here addresses a lot of the challenges that I read through my work at Georgetown and my certificate for education finance. I mean, I, I get all that, but that's, that's the one thing that is interesting to me, and I'm wondering if the school system has considered the trade-offs of doing those larger bumps without increasing the total over the 20-year period, right? Because then effect what you do is, you do shorten, you do decrease the value of the life of, of the tenure. Does that make sense what I'm saying? I don't know.
I will, I will say this, speaking as an old math teacher, I think when you look at that number, I don't think that you would see a difference between that because you're looking at values that have been equalized over a longer period of time. So I think that it's not necessarily the case that you would see any withholding of money because you're looking at the same spread over a period of time. So for example, if you're looking at, you're, what you're looking at is a stair step, and so the midpoints of each stair step are going to be exactly the same, so as you round it, there's not going to be any kind of difference between what a person that progressed through those would be as compared to somebody who progressed at equilateral steps. I think the, the area under the curve, so to speak, would be equivalent in both of those scenarios. I've not put paper to pencil, but just thinking through that process, it looks to be the same.
Yeah, thank you.
And Ms. Horn, you wanted to speak, then, Ms. Christie, did you have, I think, we have some guests here for a little bit.
Well, I just had a question, I don't know what, this might be a Mr. Sanders question, but I know Carter Elementary has been waiting, and they have to get up really early in the morning. I don't know if there's any way we could...
Yeah.
Sorry, Carter Elementary.
No.
I tried, just so you know, I tried.
Yeah, Ms. Horn?
Okay, I'll try to make this quick, I'm sorry, y'all are waiting. Okay, so I just want to say thank you to the staff for all the hard work to get to this point, and even going back to last year's budget, because obviously that's what's causing, part of what's causing us to be able to, to be able to do this. And, you know, if we think back many times over the past, it reminds me, it's so many conversations that centered around the fact that we need to be able to pay custodians and secretaries in nutrition more so that we could retain those folks. So to be able to bring them up, this mic is going in and out, I'm so sorry, but to be able to bring them up to market value is tremendous, and so I'm very thankful for that. And I, there are still a lot of questions, and it's, it's hard to have those questions, but I know that the staff can be patient, hearing that the big takeaway is that all staff will have increases, some at higher percentages than others, since some are already paid closer to market value. But the fact that everybody will be getting an increase is great. And just to make sure, I, I know you said this already, Ms. McGarren, but just to make sure, everybody knows that there, you will be coming out with the same kind of salary, the teacher scale that we're seeing, where you can see the increases year to year, you'll be coming out with that same scale for each job classification, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Ms. Horn, that is correct. So when, when, if the board approves, when we, when we post the full new salary schedule on the website, it will be very easy to, to understand what someone paid on an annual basis would make, so we will convert for our, our 200A, our 211, our 221, 255 into annual salaries.
And also for SLE and instructional coaches, all of those, all those pieces.
Yes.
So I think that those answers will come, and I think that having that transparency will also help us to be able to retain staff, because we're obviously competing with those around us, so that will help us retain staff, which I think is huge, and so it's difficult to approve this without having all of the answers that we want, but if we approve this now, that allows them to get to work on this, and I think that's what's, what is important. And I think, just again, tremendous that we're able to have this opportunity to, to make sure that all of our employees are being, being paid market value, and I think that's what we need to hear, is that, that's the goal, is to get everybody to pay, to be at market value. So thank you for the tremendous work that you're doing and that you will be doing, because it's a big job that you have ahead. Thank you.
I'd like to call the question.
A second.
Till we vote on that, right?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Is it clear that I recused on that?
I think we were voting on calling the question.
So you recuse yourself on calling for the question? Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, on calling for the question?
We were calling the question. Yeah, we haven't voted on the item yet. Okay.
Do you want me to mark you as a favorable vote on that, Ms. O'Neal?
Now we will, we'll do, we'll vote on the original motion on 10A. Yeah, can we please do a roll call vote?
Absolutely.
Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Bike?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
So that's eight yes votes and one recused vote.
Motion carries. Hey.
Item 10B, consideration of nomination of Sandra Nell Holbord for naming of Carter Elementary School cafeteria.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Ms. Horn. And then, Ms. Christie, we have some guests here.
We do.
Thank you for your patience.
They have waited patiently. I know Ms. Jella Course is here, the administrator for Carter, and I believe our assistant principal, Ms. Jones, and, and not to leave out our cafeteria manager, Ms. Brown. And just, just to go back, they did come to our meeting the other day, and they just had so many inspirational things to say, you know, I know it's been a long night for you, but, and I'm sorry, and I apologize. In hindsight, we should have bumped you up, it just, sorry about that.
No, you're great. So I'm Emily Jella Course, I'm the principal at Carter Elementary, this is Stephanie Jones, our assistant principal, Amanda Brown, our cafeteria manager, and so we just wanted to come and thank you all, first of all, for even considering the nomination. Ms. Sandro recently retired from Knox County schools after about 35 years, most of that in our nutrition department, most of that at Carter Elementary. She is a staple of Carter Elementary and has served and loved on generations of Hornets. So what better way to honor this beloved community member than, than honoring her with a permanent space in our school? So we would just appreciate your consideration, and I'll let Amanda talk a little bit, but we just appreciate the time and consideration in, in naming this facility for her.
Good afternoon. I do want to thank you guys for this opportunity to come and speak to you guys and allowing me to speak on the naming of the Carter Elementary Cafeteria. I'm going to do my very best to not get emotional. Again, my name is Amanda Brown, and I am the cafeteria manager at Carter Elementary School. I was asked by Ms. Sandra's daughters, who were wanting to keep Ms. Sandra's legacy in our school after her retirement. Her daughters wanted to name the Carter, Carter Elementary School Cafeteria after their mother, Ms. Sandra. These very genuine ladies wretch out about, wretch out to me about how to get the proper information to do so. Ms. Sandra was born and raised in the Carter community, her home place is in with two miles of the Carter Elementary School. Prior to her recent retirement, Ms. Sandra was with Knox County Schools Nutrition Department for 26 years as a food service worker. I don't know if many of you are fond of what we do, but to be a nutrition worker for 26 years is phenomenal. She has fed hundreds of thousands of hungry children of many generations in our community, and her life has touched many students, including those who have graduated, started their own families, and remember Ms. Sandra when they attend school functions with their children, they remember her kindness and what they've done for her, or for them, I'm sorry. These students still cherish and remember her kindness, it's astounding how important Ms. Sandra was to them, and still is even several years later. As the manager now, I can go on and on about the great things that Ms. Sandra has taught me in the three wonderful years of being, in her words, her boss. She's the exact role model that I needed to be a better, to better serve our students at Carter Elementary, and her guidance and grace has gave me, has gave me the opportunity to be a better leader in my career. Ms. Sandra is more than a lunch lady to the Carter community, she is a well-known hero, I'm very sorry. Ms. Sandra is the reason that Carter schools are the best. I'm so happy.
Don't be sorry at all, it speaks so, so highly of her.
Ms. Sandra came to Carter Elementary School from Carter High School, and when we built the new building, she opened it. For the Carter Elementary School students, for the Carter Elementary School Cafeteria to be named after her, it is one of the most honorable motions to keep her legacy and love in our students' lives. As the manager of Carter Elementary School, this is the biggest honor I've ever been given the opportunity to part in. And I want to add this, this actually happened yesterday in our, in our school cafeteria, we served homemade macaroni and cheese. So today, a student in the third grade came in and I asked, and I quote, "Is there any more Ms. Sandra's mac and cheese?" Ms. Sandra has been retired for three, for three months, two weeks, and two days. However, our students will forever remember the goodness she brought to them every single day. I will forever be Ms. Sandra, it will forever be Ms. Sandra's mac and cheese for many, many students in our community. Again, thank you for your time and consider Ms. Sandra for this amazing nomination.
Wow. That's amazing. Thank you for being here. Y'all may see me for some mac and cheese. Do we have any other discussion, Ms. Christie?
Well, just before they leave, you know, we've not voted, but assuming this passes, Ms. Jella Course, Ms. Brown, I would let, if you have a ceremony?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Six.
Yeah, that would be great if you could share that with us.
Yeah, that'd be great, please.
And, you know, if Ms. Sandra has some mac and cheese there, that would...
Yeah, yeah. We wouldn't oppose that.
It's a little bit past supper right now, so that would be great as well.
Is there any more discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, congratulations. Yes.
Item 10C, approved memorandum of understanding with Karnes Fair, also known as Karnes Community Fair, to establish terms regarding facility usage for annual fair, pageant, and festival events held at Karnes Middle School and Karnes High School for a maximum term of five years.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Ms. Owen. Discussion? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll be very short on this. So the Karnes Community Fair is such an integral part of the community, I think that when, when people attend, they almost forget that it's in a school, and what happens is, we end up with a lot of political advertisements inside the school, and it happens year after year after year. Every time we think that we have taken care of the situation, it's back, and I don't think it's a purposeful thing, I think it's... I think it's just happening. And so just to get some clarity, I'd like to ask Dr. Adams if there is a way that we can help ensure that everyone understands that political advertising in a school is illegal, it's not just a policy thing, so that we can make sure that we don't end up in a bad situation.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you, Ms. Owen. We can certainly work with Mr. Dupler to ensure that they adhere to all Knox County Schools policies.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you for letting me put that off.
Yeah, thank you. So any more discussion on this item? Okay, with that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Seeing that was the last item, we'll move on to the rest of our public forum speakers. Thank you for being patient.
Yes. Julie Gorman? Julie, I do appreciate you sticking around for the long night.
I am tired, so I can wait it out.
Very good. If you'll state your name and county residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. I'm Julie Gorman, I do live in Knoxville. And I'm here to talk to you. I'm a retired teacher after 30 years of teaching in Knox County Schools. I retired this past May. And I was very fortunate because I got to spend my entire career at one school. And I was at Mount Olive Elementary. And our goal every year was, how can we make the students better? We've had Mount Olive students to go on to college, to go to trade school, become loving moms and dads. We've had valedictorians, salutatorians. One year, South Door High School even had the valedictorian and salutatorian from, from Mount Olive. You just witnessed one of my former students speak a few moments ago. I'm so proud of her. And this year, we're even a reward school. So you can imagine our surprise when we were told a few weeks ago that we were having cuts. And we are no longer going to have a PAC teacher. And our teachers really depend on PAC for behavior issues. We were also told that our office personnel was going to be cut from two full-time to a full-time and a part-time. And I don't know when the last time you've been in a school office, but it can get hairy with all the needs that have to be met five minutes ago and letting school, or letting visitors in, making sure that the visitors are safe for our school. And there's concern about that. We also are losing our kindergarten assistant, and I see her quite often in the hallway, testing kindergartners on letter recognition, letter sounds, math facts. And that's a lot to be asking kindergarten teachers to be teaching the curriculum and then having to test individually as well. That's, that's very time-consuming. And kindergarten is very constant, as you know. And we're also losing our tutors. We've had full-time and a part-time, and I'm the part-time this year. And our full-time tutors, what they have done is they have collaborated with the classroom teachers on reading goals. And the tutored students, they hear the vocabulary words in the tutoring sessions, and then they hear them in the classroom, so they're hearing them twice. And the teachers are reporting that these students have increased their confidence, they've increased their motivation. And we even had a teacher or a student tell a teacher, a tutoring person, that that was his favorite part of the day, that he, he loved it so much. So in conclusion, what I'm asking is, just let us continue. We are making a difference. And we need our full-time tutors, but I'd also like, when you're going over the budget, to consider part-time tutors. That my hesitation in retiring was, will I lose my purpose? And working part-time for me has allowed me to still teach and be a part of my community. And it's also allowed me time to take
Thank you, ma'am.
my mother to the doctor.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, one more thing, as you're deciding about the budget, consider what one of Tennessee's best has said, Coach Pat Summitt, "You win in life with people." And when teachers are supported, students are too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Michael Court? Michael Court? If you want to check, I'll move on to the last one and then we can come back. Denzel Grant?
Yeah.
Very good. Then we can check on Michael in just a second. Denzel, if you'll state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. My name is Denzel Grant, Knox County resident. I currently serve as the executive director of Turnip Knox. Turnip Knox, we're a violence intervention program. We've been partnered with the city over the last 18 months. My reasoning for coming today is really just to raise an issue and concerns that we have as an organization. Through the last 18 months, we've kind of been able to build relationships in a brief period of time that we were able to go into Knox County Schools. We've been able to create a partnership with United Ways Community Schools. They've kind of been able to allow us to piggyback off the influence that they have to be able to come into Knox County Schools and just build relationships with the students. Just to give a little background on our program and what we've done, the last year alone, our practices have played a huge role in decreasing gun violence in our community. Homicides are down 33% compared to last year. Crime in East Knoxville is down 52% compared to last year. And TBI reports also show that juvenile crime was at a 10-year low, actually, last year. And I would like to humbly thank not only my staff, but community members who played a role in that decline. Not, as you can see, I'm not necessarily here to speak about an item on the agenda, but I did want to talk about and advocate for the presence and how important it is to have community members in Knox County Schools. The school district, obviously, as we know, released a discipline report. Obviously, those results showed that black students, as well as low-income students, are suspended more than any other race in our community and in our schools. And, you know, in reading that report and reading the news report, I can agree with Joe Maddux, who is the co-president of Justice Knox, when he says that it is important that we give everybody in our community and all the kids in our community the best chance that we, that we can afford in our community. I also believe the director of school culture, Janice Cook, who I've been able to have conversation with, when she says that we are looking to put structures in place that include specific schools and strengthen the support we can give both students and staff. Mr. Butler actually just spoke about policy. And when it comes to volunteers and coming into the schools, both Level 1 and Level 2 volunteers are not required to have a full extensive background check. Only Level 3 and Level 4 volunteers are, have to successfully complete a background check. Myself and our, and our program staff will fall underneath that Level 1 and Level 2 volunteer requirement. Again, this is not an attack on you guys, this is just simply a ask, what do I need to do to get my program into Knox County Schools? Thank you.
Thank you, Denzel. No, Michael? Very good. Then that concludes public forum.
With that, our meeting is adjourned. Thanks for being here, y'all.